I'd like to call to order the January 8th meeting of the Sebastian City Council. If you would all rise for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Gilliam. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mahdi. Councilmember Gilliam.
You.
Councilmember Hill is excused from tonight's meetings. Councilmember Paris here. Thank you.
Okay, tonight we've got kind of a three-part meeting. The first part of this meeting is a workshop on meeting procedures. In just a minute, I'm going to kind of recess the council meeting and convene the workshop. And then after that, we'll come back. Depending upon how long the workshop takes, we may take a break. But we'll reconvene if we do at 6 o'clock for the standard, at the standard meeting time for people who might not realize we have a workshop and might be coming to attend that meeting. And we'll have a Board of Adjustment meeting, then followed by the standard council meeting. The workshop, first of all, let me recess the city council meeting and convene the workshop. The workshop was, this particular part of the three workshops that I've asked the council to agree to do is designed primarily to talk about council procedures. I think that it's important, not just for the people up here, but for everybody in the public, to understand the processes and procedures that the council goes through. Some of those things are archaic. And the fact that they were written in Britain many, many years ago is a good indication how archaic they are, but they're the way that meetings are run. And I want to talk about those things. So there's four topics that were listed on that. First is Robert's Rules. We'll do kind of a summary of the Robert's Rules and then we'll have a conversation about it. And then talking about the Sunshine Law and Public Communication Practices. That goes along with this. And then talk about past practices. There's a couple of things that we've done in the past that kind of are different than the way the rules might be set out to do. And prior to the time that we talked about Resolution R-15-10, which is our current meeting procedures, I think it's been important to talk about those things that go on. For those of, those people in the audience, there's a nice little book right here that kind of summarizes Robert's Rules. And the city clerk has those books. If someone would like a copy of them, she can provide you a copy. There's also this giant thick, do you want to hold that monster up? Yeah, that nice thick manual that has more stuff in it than anybody except for the leader of the Senate and the leader of the House needs to know in Morrison, DC when it comes to that. I'm going to go through the process of kind of summarizing the Robert's Rules that we tend to use. We use a modified version of that, which means we don't go after, we don't use all of the, typically, we don't use all the available things that are there. We operate off an agenda, unlike the state Capitol or the federal government, which operates off primary motions that are filed by members as they bring bills forward. Our agenda is a single matter base, so each agenda item deals with a single topic. And to us, a standard primary motion, which is one in which we would either move to approve or disapprove an agenda item, is the basis for doing business, is that primary motion. So no matter what the agenda item is, if it's to buy something, we can either move to approve it or move to disapprove it. Now, there are a series of other of these motions that we actually do use. The amendment, which is an amendment to that motion. Our past practice, and I'll talk about it now, but I'll talk about it also when I get to that point, our past practice is that we don't add an amendment to a motion that does not pertain to the subject of the agenda item. We typically don't try to add buying a lawn tractor as an amendment to a motion to approve an engineering contract kind of thing. We don't typically do that, although that's done a lot by a lot of legal bodies, especially higher level legal bodies. That's how they buy $700 hammers with the legislation to approve food stamps kind of stuff. There is a motion to either postpone or table a matter. Postpone means we don't, we're not going to discuss it right now. Table means we're going to lay it on the table and may never discuss it again. If we lay it on the table, then it has to be brought back off the table for us to discuss. So if you hear someone up here say, "I want to table this item," then if that is approved with a majority vote, then the item goes on the table. We actually have one on our agenda tonight that was tabled, and we're going to have to bring it back off the table to deal with it when we get into that process. Previous question is the legal way. I think we've used call a question, we've used some other methods to do that, but previous question is the legal way to say, "Let's end discussion and vote on it," basically. So if a member decides that we've had enough discussion and we want to do that, then they'll call the previous question, and it's just a way to do that. We actually use, if someone wants to say, "Call a question," that's fine with me. I don't have any issue with that if anybody else does. It is a way for someone to ask to devote be taken. That requires a vote. I believe that requires a vote to get a vote. Now, there's three kinds of points that our members can raise. They're relatively simple in some regards and not so in others. There's a point of privilege, there's a point of order, and there's a point of information. The point of order is asking that we enforce the rules, for some reason that the member feels like the rules were not being enforced. That might be that someone from the public is speaking and they start making derogatory comments about a member, then that member or any other member can say, "Point of order." You know, "We're not supposed to do that" kind of thing. Point of information is basically a way that a member can say to someone who is in the conversation, "I really didn't understand what you said. Can you provide me more information on that?" And then point of privilege is where they want to, they want to input into the process, they want to basically get it brought back to themselves in that regard. Those all can be done while someone else is speaking, but there needs, we need to be cognizant of the fact that other people, that someone else is speaking, and try not to scream at them, but try to bring that forward in a calm manner. Point of privilege, once again, is to register a complaint to the chair. Point of information is to ask for additional information when it comes forward. And then point of order is based in, is to provide, ask the chair to actually enforce procedures. Now, if you look at this handout, if you have it, or if you look at the big book, there's a lot of other stuff in there, but quite frankly, the way that this council has traditionally done business, those are pretty much the motions that we follow through with. There's other things that we can do, but from a day-to-day basis, this is primarily the way that we actually operate the council. So when people say that we're not following the rules, there is an opportunity to say, "Let's bring it back in line and follow the rules," for our councilmember to do that. Okay. Does anybody have any comments they want to make?
Yeah, I got a comment.
Okay.
So let me ask you this, Mr. Mayor. When that person's on the floor speaking, nobody interrupts them while they're speaking until they're done, correct?
Yeah, that's the way it should be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to get that straight. Thank you.
Yeah. Assuming that you're not talking for 45 minutes, then I might ask you to come to your senses. The chair always has to run a meeting, so, okay. Any other comments about that? Anybody else? Now, one thing is that this is a workshop, so I'm going to open this up for public questions or comments at any point in time that we do this. So at this point, if anybody out there has any questions they want to ask, any comments they want to make, come on up to the microphone and introduce yourself. And as a workshop, you're not limited to one trip to the microphone, so you can come up here more than once as we go through this.
Hi, I'm on the Budget Committee, Andrea Ring. I don't know if you need to know everything. My question is if the, you call point of order, who's to make sure that it's followed?
The chair rules on a point of order, and if you disagree with the chair's ruling, then you can ask for a vote. So if Charles makes a point of order and I rule against him, then he can ask for a vote. If I rule in his favor, someone else may ask for a vote. So it's possible to ask for a vote on that. And a point of order has to be done by a majority vote.
What happens if you want your point of order to be that chair is out of order? Who is to enforce that one?
Well, the point of order has to be specific. Why are you raising it? You've broken this rule or you've broken that rule. It can't be, "I don't like the way you're doing the chair."
Right.
I don't think that would, I don't think that would kind of qualifies as a point of order. It needs to be specific.
And I wondered who was to enforce it.
Well, the way that that works, is you raise your point of order and you're specific about what you're questioning, the chair rules. If you feel like that the chair didn't rule correctly, or the chair didn't rule the way you would like to see them rule, then you can ask for a vote. And then a majority vote, based on a yea or nay on that point of order, then carries that. So the chair could be overruled by a majority vote on that. But it has to be specific. What rule is not being followed? And what would you like done?
Okay. Specifically, it would have been, you are interrupting a number, a member of the Budget Committee.
Okay.
You need to let him finish speaking. You let him to finish making his point.
Then I think you could call a point of order and ask that the meeting be brought back into order and that you would like the chair not to interrupt. And if the chair rules that it's okay for them to interrupt, then you could ask for a vote.
Ask for a vote?
Yeah.
Who's going to?
The members vote.
Okay.
Whoever the members of the committee. If it's the Budget Committee, the seven members of the Budget Committee actually vote. And the majority that either votes in favor of what the chair's ruling was, or they vote against it. If they vote against it, then the chair should follow that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a second on a point of order?
You need a second on a point of order. No, you do not.
Okay.
And once again, you can interrupt the speaker to do a point of order, but it's always nice to not, you know, if they're in the middle of a sentence, let them finish it. Kind of be calm in how you do that. Anybody else have any questions or comments? This workshop may not take 45 minutes. We might get through this quicker. All right, now, let's go to the second topic. And I will tell you, if you've got this little book right here, unless something dramatic happens, you shouldn't hear any of us say anything that's not in this book. I mean, it covers pretty much all of the primary motions and it covers pretty much all of the secondary motions or procedural motions that we really need to do. There are tons of things in there you can do, but it would be very difficult. What's going to happen if you bring up something that's wild is I'm going to ask for a parliamentary ruling from the attorney, and we probably have to take a recess while he looks it up and figures out whether we can, what we can do with it. So there's always a disadvantage to doing that type stuff. Because I don't intend to take that book and leaf through it all the time. Sunshine Law. And this is very important because I remember reading during the past six or eight months, a lot of things online that I felt were confusing about the way people thought that the Sunshine Law really needs to work. And I think it's important to understand how it works. The Sunshine Law applies to any member of a board, commission, committee, or elected official, except for the state legislators. Funny how they exempted themselves from that. It's basically really straightforward, is that any, no two people who are involved in those things can have a conversation about an item that may, and here's the operative word, that may come before them for the decision. In the case of this city council, it's very difficult for me to think of things involved with this city that may not come before the city council. So for all practical purposes, it is an extremely important thing to realize that no matter what you're talking about with another member of the, other of the five members of this council, you have an opportunity to be viewed as being, as breaking the Sunshine Law. I remember one time listening to a member of the council several years ago, talking about being at lunch, and somebody accused them of Sunshine Law violations, and what the individual said was, "All I was trying to do was eat some wings." You know? But they were accused of a Sunshine Law violation in that regard. So it applies not just to the members up here. It doesn't just apply to the members, it applies to you guys. Because you can't become an intermediary between two members of any board, commission, or committee in dealing with things that may or may not come before them, or may come before them. So if you call two councilmembers and you say to Councilmember A, "What do you think?" And you call Councilmember B and say, "Well, I talked to A, he thinks this, what do you think?" You've just broken the Sunshine Law. And it is just as capable for you to go to jail over that as it is for the two councilmembers to go to jail over. That's one of the things that I saw in some of the social media posts where people didn't seem to understand that they are also potentially liable. And if two councilmembers, for example, reference an individual, and it appears as though they are using that individual to go between, they bring that individual into that Sunshine violation. So by reference, you could be brought into a Sunshine Law violation. I think it's very important for everybody out there to understand that, it's important for the council to understand that. When it comes to the relationship between the council and the volunteer committees and boards that we have, if there's an action that that voluntary, if there's an action that's in front of the council, and councilmembers, two or more, get involved in communication with that intermediary board about actions they may take that impact the action that's in front of the council, they're in violation of Sunshine Law. And the members of that council, or board, or committee could be in violation of Sunshine Law. Yes.
So if there is an advertised board meeting to the public, maybe the attorney may want to weigh in this, and the public knows that it's being discussed here, and there's two councilmembers, you're trying to say that two councilmembers cannot be here to discuss something that may come on the agenda?
Yes, yeah, and we're going to talk about that at 6 o'clock.
And it's been, and it's been advertised?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
No. We're going to talk about that at 6 o'clock, unless you want to chip in now.
Just real quickly, in fact, I was just reading it just before you asked, because what the interpretation has been is that if two or more members of one board are going to be at another board meeting, that meeting needs to be noticed as a joint meeting, so that everybody knows that there will be members from both boards there. Otherwise, one person attending isn't really seen as problematic, depending on what's said at the meeting, but two or more members being at another board meeting is problematic. Unless it's noticed as a joint meeting.
I think it's highly, it's highly important for elected individuals and individuals who seek appointment to boards and commissions to understand that they kind of give away some of their First Amendment rights to the Sunshine Law. And you may think that you have the right to speak, but you don't necessarily have the right to speak. And it's just the way it is. The Sunshine Law will circumvent individuals' First Amendment rights to speak if it places them in violation of the provisions of that. It does circumvent that. Another example, and this is a great one, and I'm just going to make this mention, but I'm not going to go any further than that. Our current 164 process with the county that we're involved in means that it is a Sunshine violation for a member of this council to carry on a conversation with a county commissioner or a county staff member who's going to be involved in that 164 process about that annexation process, to include, to include co-authoring or co-, or co-inputting into media articles about it. That's a Sunshine Law violation. And it is extremely important that we understand the relationship that we have as councilmembers and the relationship that the public has to this law and to our responsibility to the citizens of Sebastian to be a good steward of this as we go forward with it. Okay? Any other, any comments now about Sunshine? Anybody from the audience want to ask a question? If you'd like to ask, come forward. You'll need to, if you would, give your name and your address. And you can just give your street name, you don't need to give your number.
That's fine. Jeff Craft, 5700 Marina Drive, Sebastian, Florida.
Did you get that?
I'm sorry. Jeff Craft, K-R-A-C-H-T, 5700 Marina Drive, Sebastian, Florida. I'd like to point out, I am not a City of Sebastian resident, but I would like to comment on the situation that you were referring to just now.
Okay, that would come under public, in a workshop, we can't do that. Let me ask you during our public input, during, after the, when we start the 6 o'clock meeting to make that comment.
I, that's what I previously understood, but I thought you might want to address this issue now.
No. As far as the workshop's concerned, we can't, we can't take any action during a workshop.
I understand.
So my preference would be that you do it after we reconvene at 6 o'clock.
I'm a patient, man.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, anybody else have any comments about the Sunshine Law in general and about the applicability of it? No? Anybody else here up here have any comments? No, okay. Now, the media communications, we've all signed this. I think everybody knows, the city has a website, the city has a Facebook page, the city has other media things, and we've all signed agreements that we would, that the city owns that, that we would not improperly use it and all that kind of stuff. I'd have to ask the attorney, and I'm planning on doing that, about how that extends into personal use of things like Facebook and other media sites.
Definitely an ever-evolving area of the law, but the latest has been that if you use a personal social media site and ever reference yourself or talk about city business at all, then that kind of takes that out of the realm of being a personal page anymore. So if you, if you keep it strictly personal, don't identify yourself as a councilmember and you just send baby pictures back and forth of your grandkids or whatever, that's great. But as soon as you start either talking to residents or talking city business, or even under your identifying information list yourself as a councilmember, that kicks it into the realm of being a public page. And then all those court decisions that have been flowing down, which started with our president and his Twitter account and whether he could block people and whether, you know, and all of that, and the courts have been pretty consistent in saying, "If you're a public official and you're using social media for any kind of public business, then that's a public forum and you cannot restrict any kind of speech on there. You can't block people from it, you can't delete posts once they're there, they become public records and everything else." So my recommendation, if you have a personal Facebook page, kind of sanitize it, keep it strictly to the pictures of the grandkids and so, and don't talk city business on it. And I would recommend, if you want to, and I think it's good for each of you to maybe have a public official page, so that you can keep your city stuff over here, because you do want to keep in touch with your constituents. But if you're going to have that private page, you know, try and, you need to keep them separate.
So it follows the same line that an email account and a phone would follow. If you use your personal email account and you talk about city business, that personal email account has now become public property, basically.
Absolutely. It's always a matter of the substance of the communication, not the device, whether it's your personal laptop or personal phone or whatever. If you're talking city business, that's what makes it a public record.
Right.
Which is, which is why this city and so many others have gone to issuing elected officials and employees city devices, because it just, you know, it helps. It helps keeping somebody from filing suit, asking the court to inspect your personal phone or inspect your personal computer, because none of us, I think, want that done. So if you keep city business on city devices, you're much better off.
And where this steps into the public realm is that the city does, as the attorney just referenced, the city provides each of us with an email account, with a phone, with access to the city email. And if one of us communicates with a member of the public through that medium and you communicate back, you need to understand that everything you say is subject to being released on a public records release. They don't have to come get your phone to release those records, because those records are on file at the city. So it's, you know, you can't take your phone and one day decide you're going to mash it up and you're safe, because that's on file with the city.
What, if I can make a recommendation, Mayor, you know, because we all do have personal phones too, and you can't always control what other people do, if somebody sends you a text or an email to either a private email account or to, you know, text you on your private phone, my recommendation would be, if it's a text, you take a screenshot of it and email it to the city clerk, saying, "I just received this." Or if it's an email, forward it to the city clerk and say, "I just received this." That way, at that point, it's in her email system, it's part of the city record, and then, you know, then you're going to, you know, could safely say if anyone ever asks, "Is there any, are there any city texts on your phone?" You can say, "Any texts I ever got that was unsolicited dealing with city business, I've sent to the city clerk and she's got them." So that would be the best advisable path.
So is anybody from the audience out there have any comments they want to make about the public, the public communication arena? No? Okay. Everybody looks like they're either confused or asleep. No, I see a smile back there. Okay. Yes, come forward, please.
Okay, Bob Steven, 150 Contra Drive, Sebastian. My question was, you were saying about communicating between councils. Well, when do you do that, Mr. Dodd? At the meetings?
Gavel to gavel.
Pardon me?
I call it gavel to gavel.
In this, in this environment?
This is it. This is the only time we could communicate.
Communicate the group of you? Okay, that was, that's good.
That's why, that's why, and the reason that I even bring that up in some regards is I noticed during a lot of the past several months, during a lot of the social media, it's people kind of think that we communicate, we can't. We really can't talk about issues outside of these meetings.
I see.
And it's very difficult sometimes to try to talk about issues within the meetings, because this is a kind of a political setting. So my intent for the next year, as long as I'm on the council and the mayor, is to have more workshops. During workshops, we can be more free-form in the way we communicate.
This would be helpful, to have more of these.
This doesn't tie us down to the formality of an agenda and motions and arguments and all that kind of stuff.
Especially us Northerners, way, way north, you know, we meet either at the coffee shop or the bar.
You don't have Sunshine Law.
I mean, that's what happens.
And they do that in Tallahassee also.
Pardon me?
They do that in Tallahassee also.
Yeah, but I mean, that's how the old small towns did, and there was a big vote. In the small towns in the north, they would bring big votes to the town hall. And anything over $10,000 or $5, whatever the town decided, they would bring to the town hall. And consequently, then there were a lot of people there. So thank you for doing this meeting, and this is very helpful.
Okay.
More each year would be great, especially for us, more of these each year would be good, especially for us Northerners. We're a little slow down here.
How dare you move here? Take away my paradise. You can tell by the way I talk, I'm not a northern. All right, past practices. I'm going to step in, I've only got two items here, and we can talk about, if anybody here has anything that they would like to bring up, because there may be more of these. These are just the two things. Since we typically follow an agenda, as I said earlier, our primary motions are single-sourced. We take an agenda item, we pass it, we either pass it or fail it. And so we don't, we have not amended a primary motion with an item that is not pertinent to the item that's being discussed. We haven't done that in the past. And so I don't anticipate that in the future we have a need to do that. That's one of the biggest arguments that people have about state and federal legislatures, is they tend to, through amendment, to add all kinds of stuff to a piece of legislation that has nothing to do with it. And we don't tend to do that. So I will try as much as I can, if it ever happens, to stop that amendment process from taking place, although once an amendment is put up, it has to just go to a vote. Usually, if you follow Robert's Rules completely, which we don't, but once a motion is made and seconded, the discussion is primarily within the body that's dealing with the topic. We have in the past, and I anticipate we will continue, after a motion is made and seconded, to solicit public input to that motion, as opposed to cutting off public input because a motion has been put on the floor and seconded. But if you go back and look at more of the pure process within that, once a motion is put on the once a motion is put on the floor and seconded, the body itself would be the only ones that would be carrying on a conversation. We, a lot of times, we have a motion made the minute that an agenda item is introduced. And if we tried to follow the non-public input after a motion is made, we'd be cutting public input off quite a bit more than we do. So we typically allow that to take place after that happens. I will say to the public that the public input, based on an agenda item and a motion, is aimed at that particular item. It's not pertinent to bring things other than that up during the public input process because we're not, as a council, we don't follow the same rules that the federal legislators do. We don't have 100 motions on the floor and play games with them. We have one and we have to decide it, basically, the way we, the way our past practices work. We just have a single motion, let's approve this contract, let's approve this purchase, let's approve this, and we want to deal with that motion. We want to either pass it or fail it, one way or the other, when it goes through that. Has there anybody got any other things that you want to bring up?
I just want to read under the Section 1 Roberts Rules of Order adopted under Resolution 1510. It says, "Failure to follow said rules shall not affect the validity of the any section taken." What does that mean?
I think that means if we don't follow them thoroughly, we're okay.
Thank you.
Maybe it should be said that way. So is that kind of your interpretation?
Yes, I mean, that's the intention, is obviously there's a whole plethora of rules and there's interaction, as we know, Roberts' rules doesn't exactly apply to government and so we have to modify and everything. So the idea being is that you don't want to have any of your legislative items or any quasi-judicial things, anything you do to be challenged based upon some, you know, hyper-technicality that, you know, somebody spoke out of turn before someone else or something like that. So the idea is if the rules are not strictly followed, it doesn't invalidate the action.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, the last item is Resolution R1510. Now, what Resolution R1510 is for the people in the audience, I don't think we have extra copies of that, but it is basically, it was done in 2015 and it's the last time that a city council modified the rules under which they operate. It's a five-page document. And it lays out the sequencing of the agenda, it lays out the rules under which we process the agenda. If anybody would like a copy of it, you can go to the city website, The Laserfish, and find it. It's relatively easy to find in there. If you've never done that before, you might get some assistance from the city to help doing that. My real question on that tonight primarily is for the council members. If any of you see that there is an opportunity or a reason to bring this up for revision, we would have to do that at our subsequent meeting, we can't do it during a workshop. But it's here so you can look at, and at some point in time during a subsequent meeting, you might bring it up and we might actually look at it. I've looked through it. I don't see anything in here that really prohibits us from continuing to operate the way we've been operating, and I don't really know that there's any reason to change it just for the sake of changing it. The last revision was to change the meeting times from 6:30 to 6:00. The whole concept of having a limit on the length of the meeting, quite frankly, is because, prior to the time that they did that, there was council meetings that ran until 2:00 in the morning. And I'm not sure that I could be making a valid decision at 2:00 in the morning. I'd be wanting to go home and go to bed. So these are pretty straightforward rules on this process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would you read Section 3, the chair, that one paragraph so everybody understands it? That's in that resolution?
Okay, the chair. It says in here, and this is talking about the duties of the chair during the meeting, I guess. "The chair may make a motion, second a motion, or participate in discussion without relinquishing the chair," which means I can be inactive. "Members of the council have the exclusive right to raise questions or procedure or points of order to the chair and have the chair rule on the procedure or point of order. Any member of the council may appeal the decision of the chair to the entire council. The result shall be determined by majority vote." That's what I said earlier under the point of order thing. Just so everybody here knows, and I haven't talked about the charter, but if you're citizens of Sebastian and you haven't looked at our charter, you might want to look at it. Under the charter, the five members of the city council are equal powered. The mayor has no power that the other four members of the council don't have, except during the gavels, when, start a meeting, stop a meeting. And then the mayor is actually the chair of the meeting, and the mayor has the responsibility to try to facilitate running a meeting. The mayor also has some ceremonial things. I have to sign some documents, we have to do some stuff like that. But as far as, as far as power is concerned, within the city government, the, all five of us have equal-based, equal rights to power in that process. That's based on our charter. Also, based on our charter, there's a lot of things we can't do, and it would be interesting to make sure everybody understands that. Members of this council cannot direct staff in any way. We can't do a lot of things that people think that the council can do. Somebody calls me and complains, I go to him, or I go to her, or I go to him with that complaint because that's what I have the right to do. I don't have the right to go into the city staff and take that complaint. That's their job, to do that. So it's important for everybody to understand the limits that the council members have. And sometimes you might be very frustrated because you call a council member about a problem and you think it's going to be fixed tomorrow. May not happen, may not even be able to get to the right person before the end of the day tomorrow to try to get it fixed. So it's important for that to go with the regard. So does anybody see any reason why you might want, why we might want to schedule bringing this resolution back for review? 1510. The procedure resolution. No? No, Charles? No? Okay, so we're not going to worry about bringing that back for review then, okay. Yeah, you have to come up to do it. This is still a public meeting, so. And you have to introduce yourself again.
Bob Steven, Concha Drive, Sebastian. On that, on that last bit there, you said, if Paul's not doing his job, what have I got to do? I got to wait for the next council meeting?
Okay, I don't know what you mean by not doing his job. You have to be more specific than that.
Okay, if he's failing to do what he's supposed to do.
What, once again, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to understand.
I'm just throwing this out.
You have to be more specific. If you're, if you have a problem, it needs to be a specific problem. He hasn't fixed my drainage ditch. That's a specific problem.
You're not fixing those, so that's not a good point.
We are fixing them.
Okay, so, well, yeah, but I mean, everybody complains about that, so I'm not, that's not, that's nitpicking.
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm saying big.
There has to be some specific problem.
How about employees are not doing their job and you're supposed to be supervising them and no one's supervising them?
We don't supervise the employees. The city manager supervises the employees.
Wow, do you have any openings?
Yeah, you want a job?
This is great.
I'll tell you right now, he's not an easy man to work for.
I don't want to work for him.
Okay.
Okay, that was.
Now, you may not want that opening.
So it's at this, this meeting, if I have a complaint on city management of any sort, and it's at this venue that I get to voice it?
Yeah.
Or do I put it in writing?
Okay, here's the thing. It will do you no good to say the city manager's not doing his job because what action do we take? It won't do any good to say, "I don't like the city manager," because what action do we take?
Right, I understand that.
You know? If you have a specific item that's not being done.
Yeah.
And I know, I won't use the drainage ditch thing again, I'll say the street.
It doesn't matter what it is, this is hypothetical.
I reported them and they're not being fixed. You bring that in under public input.
Okay.
Yeah.
At the council meetings?
At the council meetings.
And if it's more severe than that?
If it's more severe than that, you call.
Can I call the mayor? Oh, the hotline?
Yeah, call that hotline. No, seriously, take that card.
Okay, now, that's a good answer.
You call the hotline. The hotline number, that hotline number will be answered. You will lodge your issue and it will be taken to the correct person to be fixed.
And that'll be logged in?
They're logged in, they're traced. They're logged in, they're traced, and any of us who want to sit down with the city manager and talk about hotline issues, we could do that.
Okay.
We can't tell him who to make work on it, but we can do that.
Right, I understand that. So that, that's the trail.
Right.
That's the paper trail we need to follow.
That's the paper trail.
And if that doesn't work, you put it in writing? Could you write to the mayor?
The way you put it in writing is on the website at the hotline.
Okay.
Once again, you can go on the website and you can log a written complaint to the hotline, just like you can call them.
You'll have to forgive me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm just learning this electronic highway.
No, I understand.
So, but I, that clarifies that.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, quite frankly, I don't think the written input gets any different work than the call-in does. They both go through the same process, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, so they both go through the same process, so I don't know that there's any real.
And they're both legally upheld?
Well, yes. I'm going to say yes to that, but I don't know what, I mean, once again, that's kind of a broad thing. Is it legally done, you know?
This is for future use, and like I said, these meetings are so great.
I always make an assumption that people do the right thing.
Me too.
And so I'm not going to worry about whether they legally are handling these complaints. My assumption is going to be that they have a vested interest in working the complaints and coming up with a solution and trying to fix them. The worst thing that can happen is they call you and say, "That's going to happen next year" because that's when your street's on the, on the list.
Well, if you get a call back, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if it's ongoing, you want to continue with it, that's what I was asking about.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you, I think you've clarified that nicely.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You talked about possibly modifying Resolution, was it 1510 or whatever one you just referred? Is there a way, I don't know if this pertains to it, but public input's kind of like late in the meeting. And I was wondering, I know we can modify it with the majority vote when you start the meeting, but maybe it's something we can address in the future, the near future, where the people could come in and we, the public can be heard so they don't have to sit two or three hours through the meeting. So maybe pushing it further up the agenda?
Yeah, that would be something, we would have to bring the resolution back in order to change that because it's actually in an exhibit to the resolution, but that would be something that would be perfectly fine.
Can we get a consensus up here right now?
Well, we can't, no, because this is, you can't do that during a workshop. You have to actually be in an action item in a regular meeting to do something like that. So we can ask the city manager to bring this resolution back to us at our next meeting or the meeting after that.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not looking to take action on it tonight, but I wanted to see if there was a consensus with the board members that we'll have the city manager put it on a.
And if, and if we, we could then discuss moving public input up maybe after the consent agenda or after committee reports.
Exactly.
Before we do public hearings, that's fine, we can talk about that.
And I'd like to hear from the public, maybe they want to stay late and stay for the whole meeting. I mean, you know, so I'd like to address it, thank you.
The chairs are not comfortable enough for a long nap, so you don't know what might happen out there. But, so, Mr. Carlisle, let's, let's put it on the agenda. I'm not sure what our next meeting looks like, it might be crowded, but we can, we can do it either at the next meeting or the meeting after that. Okay. Now, my last thing, because we're getting on the end, and this is, this is my personal analogy about being on the member of a council. I, I went through a lot of gyrations, and some of the city staff can tell you about smiling at me as they try to tell me the way you do it in the government business. A member of this council has the power to bring to this council an item. That's pretty much what they've got. And then they turn that power over to this council. And on a majority vote, the council then has power, based on its voting mechanism, to enact the strategic item or the tactical item and turn it over to the city staff to be implemented. The council does not have the power to dictate implementation, to control implementation, to be involved in implementation. They only have the power to direct that. So if a member of this council wants to bring an item up, they bring it forward. If we agree to that item, then it's either transferred to the city clerk, city manager, or city attorney, most likely it's the city manager because it's going to be operational in nature. And they then take that forward and they deal with it. It's simple when you, if you think about it that way, but it's very complex if you're coming from a business world and you're trying to understand the way a business would operate, where as a member of a board, for example, in a business environment, you might actually be walking up to people's desk and saying, "Why aren't you doing that?" We can't do that. We have no right to do that under our charter. So it's important to understand that. It's important for the public to understand that, that we have no right to do that. Anybody out there got anything they want to bring up? Anybody up here got anything they want to bring up? Okay, then we're in recess till 6:00. Okay.
Just so you understand where I'm coming from. I just don't like to have paperwork dropped on me the day of the meeting, an hour before, a half hour, as soon as I get here. So, that's the reason why I'm not going to consider it. I wanna have time to research things, and have a chance to...
Okay. This was in my box.
I did email it yesterday, and then I put a hard copy in your boxes. And I attached it to the agenda, so the public could see it.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you how this came about, just so we can go from there. And the reason... I'm probably the reason that it is... That it was late getting here, is in a conversation with the city manager on Monday. We were discussing this, and I asked him point-blank about the condition of the fields, because I'd had some requests from... I'd had requests from some people who use these fields. And part of the conversation we were having is about this ball field that's in the back in Friendship Park, and the fact that there is someone who wants to use that, and the red ant's so bad that they can't use it. And when we talked about it, I asked him to put together something from the leisure service manager, or director, that not only specifies what it is that they're having issues with, but what product he wants to use, so that we had indication of what the treatment product was that he wants to use. And so, I can apologize for the fact that we got it late, but it didn't come out... It actually didn't come up until Monday afternoon. I think it was probably 2:00 when I left your office, or something like that. And so, they, right away, he got with Brian, and Brian then put this together. The problem is that, right now, we've got a situation where... The expediency is important, okay? He's got a list of items here. We don't necessarily have to approve all this, but we can talk, we can get into a conversation, if we get it on the agenda, with Brian, about which of these items are most important. I tend to think about it real simply. I don't have a nine-year-old son anymore, because I'm old, but I think about this poor nine-year-old kid who's trying to play, practice his ball on that field, and he rolls around, and he goes home, and he's got red ant bites all over his legs, and he trips, because the mole crickets are eating the grass, and so forth. And I've also received some emails from some people. In particular, I got a really good one today from, what do they call themselves? The Old Guys Softball League, or something? And I will tell you, I've communicated with these people in the last three years. I can't tell you how many times, and it's always been, "Our field's unplayable. We can't do this. We can't do that. We can't do this." And all of a sudden, I get an email today telling me how great the last nine months have been for those fields out there, and how what kind of good shape they're in, and for us to try to make sure we do everything we can to put them in that shape. So I will apologize for the fact that you got it late. It's just that it didn't come up until that conversation on Monday that I had with the city manager, and I asked him to put this together for us, so we could talk about it. Okay, so, once again, we have problems on those fields. There, we have spent a lot of money in the last year getting those up to probably the best shape they've been in, I would venture to say, ever. Although, I can't guarantee that, because I haven't been here forever. But they're in great shape. They're playable. They're usable. And I would hate for us to let those things fall apart, because we wait too long to try to talk about it.
I'd like to hear from the other members on the board, see what their feelings are. You are on the agenda, you know, 13A. I mean, it's just additional information you're requesting.
No, 13A only covers the test for WOW. That's all it covers. Item 13A is asking for us to give the city manager permission to have an exemption from the moratorium for the purpose of testing the WOW product in an aquatic environment, which means actually producing some test plots, and testing the WOW product in an aquatic environment. It doesn't involve any spraying, any wholesale use. It's only for the purpose of producing the test. He's been able to test it in a non-aquatic environment, but before he got it to the aquatic environment, the moratorium was put in, so he hasn't been able to test it in an aquatic environment yet.
Isn't it that time of year when most of this stuff is dormant?
I don't... I mean, I walk in the Stormwater Park all the time, and there's plenty of weeds. So, I don't have any issue with him being able to do that. And I'm gonna go by the leisure service director's letter that he has these problems. He's been the one... Actually, he's been here for a year, and in that year, he's converted that Barber Street complex into something that we can all be proud of. So I have to... I'm gonna give him the credit, and the assumption that what he's saying is 100% correct here.
Well, I think that another 14 days, it's not gonna be the end of the world, so I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, so we're gonna jeopardize the park?
I think we're not gonna jeopardize anything. I think 14 more days, so that we have proper information to make proper decisions, is the right way to do things around here. I just don't wanna slide things through to the last minute.
All right, so the motion fails.
Correct.
And I just wanna remind everybody out there that we've got a park down there that people have to play in, that we are, once again, jeopardizing.
We can get a consensus, Mr. Mayor, to have the city manager put it on the next meeting. It's in 14 days. Is that correct? The next meeting?
We'll talk... I'll talk about that with him, about putting it on the agenda.
Well, we can just get a consensus right now. There's four of us up here.
Yeah. It'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, great. But this is where I look forward to it, and I can do my due diligence.
Any other agenda modifications? Proclamations, awards, brief announcements. Brief announcements. The Craft Club Show in the park is from 10:30 to 3:00 on the 11th, which is Saturday, I believe. Sebastian River Fine Art Festival, Music Festival is in River View Park on January 18th and 19th. And the Felsmere Frogleg Festival, in our sister city of Felsmere. And for any of you who have never been out there, it's a great event. You don't have to eat froglegs. There have a lot of other things that you could eat. It's from 16th through the 19th, and it is a great event.
Mr. Mayor? Could I add one more event that's going along with that? The Indian River County Executive Roundtable 5K Run is that Saturday at the Rails to Trails, and it starts at the Felsmere Preserve there. It goes over 95, so anybody who wants to... You can sign up at the event if you want, but it's the 5K Indian River Executive Roundtable Committee, and the funds go to support the underserved youth in Indian River County. I apologize that it wasn't put on the agenda, and if I'm out of order.
All right. Does anybody in the audience have any type of a community or civic event that they'd like to advertise right now? Nobody? All right. Then I am going to, once again, adjourn the city council meeting-
I'm going to reconvene the city council meeting for January 8th. Are there any agenda modifications I'd like to bring? I have a request that we, for discussion purposes, that we do an agenda modification and that we add a item that the city manager has provided us along with a letter from the Director of Leisure Services to... Oh, let me go back here and see where I'd like to put it and then we can get it to vote on it. To item 13A1. So I'm making a motion that we do that. Do I have a second on that motion?
Item 13A1.
That's after we talk about the testing.
You need a unanimous vote?
I'm sorry, can you turn your mic on?
Need a unanimous vote?
I need a unanimous vote. So I'm just asking for a second and then we'll take the vote. And just for anybody in the audience who wants to know this, our ball fields are being attacked, red ants, mighty black ants, and some other things. There's a memo from the Director of Leisure Services talking about some selective, non... not non-selective, but selective treatments that he'd like to do so that they remain in playing capability. And so that's the item that I'd like to add to the agenda for discussion purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and second it for discussion only.
Okay.
Just so you understand where I'm coming from. I just don't like to have paperwork dropped on me the day of the meeting, an hour before, a half hour, as soon as I get here. So that's the reason why I'm not going to consider it. I want to have time to research things and have a chance to...
Okay. This was in my box.
I did email it yesterday and then I put a hard copy in your boxes and I attached it to the agenda so the public could see it.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to tell you how this came about, just so we can go from there. And the reason, I'm probably the reason that it is, that it was late getting here is in a conversation with the city manager on Monday. We were discussing this and I asked him point-blank about the condition of the fields because I'd had some requests from, I'd had requests from some people who use these fields. And part of the conversation we were having is about this ball field that's in the back in Friendship Park and the fact that there is someone who wants to use that and the red ant is so bad that they can't use it. And when we talked about it, I asked him to put together something from the leisure service manager or director that not only specifies what it is that they're having issues with, but what product he wants to use so that we had indication of what the treatment product was that he wants to use. So I can apologize for the fact that we got it late, but it didn't come out, it actually didn't come up until Monday afternoon. I think it was probably 2:00 when I left your office or something like that. And so they right away, he got with Brian and Brian then put this together. The problem is that right now we've got a situation where the expediency is important, okay? He's got a list of items here. We don't necessarily have to approve all this, but we can talk, we can get into a conversation if we get it on the agenda with Brian about which of these items are most important. I tend to think about it real simply. I don't have a nine-year-old son anymore because I'm old, but I think about this poor nine-year-old kid who's trying to play, practice his ball on that field and he rolls around and he goes home and he's got red ant bites all over his legs and he trips because the mole crickets are eating the grass and so forth. And I've also received some emails from some people. In particular, I got a really good one today from, what do they call themselves, the Old Guys Softball League or something? And I will tell you, I've communicated with these people in the last three years. I can't tell you how many times and it's always been, "Our field's unplayable, we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do this." And all of a sudden I get an email today telling me how great the last nine months have been for those fields out there and how, what kind of good shape they're in and for us to try to make sure we do everything to put them in that shape. So I will apologize for the fact that you got it late. It's just that it didn't come up until that conversation on Monday that I had with the city manager and I asked him to put this together for us so we could talk about it. Okay? So, once again, we have problems on those fields. We have spent a lot of money in the last year getting those up to probably the best shape they've been in, I would venture to say ever, although I can't guarantee that because I haven't been here forever. But they're in great shape, they're playable, they're usable, and I would hate for us to let those things fall apart because we wait too long to try to talk about it.
I'd like to hear from the other members on the board, see what their feelings are. You are on the agenda, you know, 13A. I mean, it's just additional information you're requesting.
No, no, 13A only covers the test for WOW. That's all it covers. Item 13A is asking for us to give the city manager permission to have an exemption from the moratorium for the purpose of testing the WOW product in an aquatic environment, which means actually producing some test plots and testing the WOW product in an aquatic environment. It doesn't involve any spraying, any wholesale use, it's only for the purpose of producing the test. He's been able to test it in a non-aquatic environment, but before he got it to the aquatic environment, the moratorium was put in, so he hasn't been able to test it in an aquatic environment yet.
Isn't it that time of year when most of this stuff is dormant?
I don't, I mean, I walk in the Stormwater Park all the time and there's plenty of weeds. So I don't have any, I don't have any issue with him being able to do that. And I'm going to go by, I'm going to go by the leisure service director's letter that he has these problems. He's been the one, actually, he's been here for a year and in that year he's converted that Barber Street complex into something that we can all be proud of. So I have to, I'm going to give him the credit and the assumption that what he's saying is 100% correct here.
Well, I think that another 14 days, it's not going to be the end of the world, so I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. So we're going to jeopardize, we're going to jeopardize the park?
I think, we're not going to jeopardize anything. I think 14 more days so that we have proper information to make proper decisions is the right way to do things around here. I just don't want to slide things through at the last minute.
All right, so the motion fails.
Correct.
And I just want to remind everybody out there that we've got a park down there that people have to play in, that we are, once again, jeopardizing.
We can get a consensus, Mr. Mayor, to have the city manager put it on the next meeting. It's in 14 days, is that correct? The next meeting?
We'll talk, I'll talk about that with him, about putting it on the agenda.
Well, we can just get a consensus right now, there's four of us up here.
Yeah. It'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, great. But this is where I look forward to it and I can do my due diligence.
Any other agenda modifications? Proclamations, awards, brief announcements. Brief announcements. The Craft Club Show in the park is from 10:30 to 3:00 on the 11th, which is Saturday, I believe. Sebastian River Fine Art Festival, Music Festival is in River View Park on January the 18th and 19th. And the Felsmere Frogleg Festival in our sister city of Felsmere. And for any of you who have never been out there, it's a great event. You don't have to eat froglegs, there have a lot of other things that you could eat. It's from 16th through the 19th. And it is a great event.
Mr. Mayor, could I add one more event that's going along with that? Indian River County Executive Roundtable 5K Run is that Saturday at the Rails to Trails and it starts at the Felsmere Preserve there and goes over 95. So anybody who wants to, you can sign up at the event if you want, but it's the 5K Indian River Executive Roundtable Committee and the funds go to support the underserved youth in Indian River County. I apologize that it wasn't put on the agenda and if I'm out of order.
All right. Does anybody in the audience have any type of a community or civic event that they'd like to advertise right now? Nobody? All right. Then I am going to, once again, adjourn the city council meeting and move on to the Board of Adjustment meeting. And we have the minutes from our May 9th, or excuse me, May 8th, 19... No, we don't have any minutes, do we? No.
Yes, under A, you have approval of May 8th, 2019 Board of Adjustment meetings.
May 8th Board of Adjustment meetings, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So I have a motion on those minutes?
Second.
All in favor, same five to same eye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. Now we have a quasi-judicial hearing. I'm going to open the hearing and ask the, ask the attorney to read the request.
Yes, this is Fred and Gloria Clifford requesting a variance from Section 54-2-5.2.2, subsection D.5 of the Sebastian Land Development Code. In regards to Lot 45, San Sebastian Springs subdivision replat located at 616 Cross Creek Drive, the variance is for an existing pool screen enclosure to be at a maximum 1.3 feet from the side property line of a corner lot and encroach into a 5-foot utility easement where the regulations for the RS 20 zoning district requires that structures maintain a minimum setback of 15 feet from the side property line.
Okay. Have any of the board members have any expertake communications they'd like to report on this item? None? All right. Would the City Clerk please swear in? Anyone who intends to address this item to the city council needs to stand and be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the factors, the actions of actual estimation which are outside of the statute of law and is not applicable to the public hearing will be critical and accurate?
Okay. And just as a point of reference, we didn't talk about this in our previous workshop, but this is one other thing that I've noticed in some of the social media, there seems to be a lot of confusion about. In either public hearings or quasi-judicial hearings, the applicant and the staff are allowed opportunity and time to present the item that we're hearing. We're not giving them more time just because we want to, we're giving them more time because that's required that we do that. So at this point in time, if the applicant would like to come forward and make a presentation, you may do that.
Evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Fred, F-R-E-D, Clifford, C-L-I-F-F-O-R-D, like the big red dog. Did you get that? I'm at 616 Cross Creek Drive, Lot Number 45, San Sebastian Springs. I purchased this house in December of 2017. About a year later, I had a situation arise where I found out that I was not in compliance, my property was not in compliance. The house was built in 1988. The screen room and swimming pool were installed in 1998. There's been five owners prior to me that skated by and didn't get stuck with this situation. It was done legally, approved by the city on an old survey, but even on the survey it showed a 10-foot setback on the old survey. Well, now I'm told because it's a corner lot, it requires a 15-foot setback. In my opinion, this is the city's mess-up, not mine, I didn't build it. So I'm applying or petitioning for a variance. I've gotten Florida Power and Light has already written off on it, Dr. Fisher of San Sebastian Springs and the board, minus myself, because I'm on the board there and I can vote, but they've written off on it. You should have all of that paperwork in hand.
Okay. Is that all you've got?
That's it.
Okay. The city staff, can you make your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you.
We may call, I'm sorry, we may call you back if anyone has any questions at that point in time, so.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, council. With regards to, I'm not sure how the issue came up, it wasn't city, any code enforcement issue or anything against the property. Mr. Clifford did come into our office this summer. He had a new survey done where it did show that the screen enclosure was 1.3 feet from the property line. It's on an angle, that is the closest point to that. So he did come in to ask us how we could clear this up. There is some unresolved issues with a survey. From the survey that was, the city did use in 1988 to have the house built and the pool is different from the survey that was currently, recently done in 2018. Those unresolved issues are something that the city usually doesn't put our fingers in, that's going to be between surveyors and where those markers are and something that he'll have to deal with with the subdivision. So my understanding is Mr. Clifford wants to put his house up for sale. There may be an issue with some title insurance because of that encroachment, not only into the setback, but also into the easement. When the city re-reviewed the building permit that was issued in 1998, which based on that time, it was issued in good faith that it met the current code, there was an inadvertent determination though of a side or what was a side yard and what was the rear yard. The pool was behind the house, it was assumed to be the rear yard. Based on our definition, which we put in the packet for you, the definition of rear yard and side yard, this is a side yard, based on our land development code definition, which requires it to be 15 feet from the property. At this point though, we also told Mr. Clifford that because it was in the 5-foot utility easement, which that easement is not dedicated to the city, we don't have any maintenance or responsibilities for that easement, that in order for council to even consider the variance, you would need to see that that encroachment to the utility easement was okay with Florida Power and Light and the board, the POA, because that's who it is dedicated to. The board did hold a special meeting to consider that. You were given a copy of the minutes where they have said it's okay for it to encroach in their easement and we do have a letter from Florida Power and Light. The letter was addressed to Mr. Clifford. I glanced at that, there was an errant lot number in that letter. We did contact Mr. Marjan and he has resent that letter with the correct lot in it. So it is Lot 45 versus the Lot 62 that is shown in his letter, but we do have those approvals. With regards to the criteria on page 19, that the council must consider in order to approve this variance, staff feels that it meets all the standards. There are some existence of special conditions or circumstances, there is an unresolved survey issue and yes, there possibly was an errant determination in 1998 with the pool. The conditions were not created by the applicant. Special privileges are not being conferred to Mr. Clifford if the variance is granted. There is a financial hardship if Mr. Clifford has to relocate this. The minimum variance is just going to be for that 1.3 feet. It's staff determination that it won't be injurious to public welfare and it meets the intent of the ordinance. We did not feel at this time there was any conditions that needed to be proposed. No time limit except that if it is, if at any time Mr. Clifford, our future owner, wishes to redesign that screen enclosure, yes, then the, he would have to meet the current setback at 15 feet. And this is not a use variance permitted. So it does meet all of the criteria regarding staff's consideration of the variance and we recommend approval.
All right. Does anyone on the council or the board have any questions for either the staff or the applicant? Do you have questions?
I did bring the attention of the lot number to the city manager when I read it. Do you have a copy of that with you?
I do.
Is there a reason why we don't have a copy? They gave us copies before this meeting, I'm just wondering why we didn't get that copy?
It was, it was just a day or two that it was discovered that there was an errant lot number in the Florida Power and Light letter. We did reach out to Florida Power and Light. Within two hours, I had a revised letter. That was, we received it yesterday.
Okay. The second question that I had. So he just changed the lot number and left the old date, didn't want to reflect today's date or yesterday's date, he just want to...
Well, July was when he made, when they determined that it was, they had no issue with it. It still was addressed to Mr. Clifford, the only information.
I understand that, but when I read this letter, it looks like it's a second letter. I know it's a second letter. And it's showing the same date. It should reflect a new date with the corrective lot number.
I think that the decision though was made in July.
I'm aware of that, but it's not showing a correction. The correction was made. Let me ask you this, were the property owners all notified within, what's the code on notifying the property owners about?
The land development code requires a legal notice to be published 15 days and letters to surrounding property owners 15 days before the hearing today. So letters were mailed out in December 23rd.
Okay. And within how many feet of the property?
300 feet. We had 28 letters.
Okay. And do we have a list of those names that we sent those letters out to?
Yes.
We do. Is there a reason why we don't have that in our file? Because I think you can get, how many names are there? How many names did you send out?
I believe there's 28.
28. Okay.
We can begin, given that information, we just...
Well, for me to sign off on something, I need to know, because if I were a neighbor and something like this transpired without me being notified, and it's not in my file and I can't see it, you know, it's going to be hard for me to make a decision on that. So I want to make sure that the neighbors, I don't know if there's any neighbors in here this evening, oh, there's a few neighbors here opposed to it, which is good.
We received, we received an affidavit from the Press Journal that the notice was in the paper and we have it as part of our file.
Not everybody gets the Press Journal, so, but that legal notice to the property owners within 300 feet is very critical. And I've seen in the past, and I'm not saying with this staff here, they miss people that are within 300 feet because it's happened and I've seen the city in court and litigating over it. And I want to try to avoid that. So, the second, third thing that I had, I was looking at the unanimous written consent in lieu of for the special meeting, Board of Directors. I see that it's a family that signs off, I guess they all sit on as the Board of Directors. Was that verified with the state of Florida that they are still the Board of Directors?
So this letter was received by the attorney for the Property Owners Association. I'm assuming that attorney would not have sent this to us if it had incorrect directors and board members on that.
You assume that the attorney would not have sent it if it was not correct?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Well, have you known that attorneys do make errors, right?
There's, to streamline processes, there, you're going to, if we have to check and double-check on a lot of this stuff, this is going to take a lot longer to...
I understand, but I just want to make sure that the Board of Directors have the authorities to exercise that unanimous written consent in lieu of as the Board of Directors and if it's not verified, I mean, it's a simple lookup on the state website to see if, you know, maybe the city attorney might want to weigh in on this for me.
When we get these applications, you know, the applicant has a certain responsibility to provide us the information. Yes, if, as a policy decision, the council wants to require that everything be, you know, checked and double-checked and phone calls made and everything to make sure, but at some point in time, you know, we accept what's presented to us. If somebody says that they're a corporation, that they're an officer of the corporation, you know, unless there's some red flags and it does come up at times, but if everything's looking on the up and up and it's a, you know, it's a setback, a 1.3-foot setback, it was just something that, you know, isn't something that would give, put up the red flag that says that we need to do an in-depth, you know, full-blown FDLE investigation on whether this was lawfully submitted or not. I mean, if we do want to start going down that road, we can, it is just going to take more staff time.
Well, Mr. Attorney, I beg to defer on, that's not the way to put this. This is just crossing our Ts and Dots in our eyes, sir. And with all due respect, you know, first of all, there was a FPNL letter, did not have the right legal description, law description. That's critical. Okay? So you're giving, FPNL is giving the message to the city that they did their due diligence and in fact, if I didn't check it, it would have been incorrect. So that means the attorney overlooked it as well. Number two, it doesn't take more than two minutes, I can pull out my smartphone right now and pull up the state website and verify that this is a legitimate nonprofit Board of Directors, that's been probably recorded down at the courthouse. It's a very simple, two, three minutes, five minutes if you're inexperienced, to verify and put it in the file so that we as board members don't get ourselves into a quadruple run. And this is why we hire attorneys and staff to bring these documents to us correctly. And this is why I don't like to do rush jobs, because it creates problems. If there are people out there that are not happy, that live in the neighborhood that affects their property and we were negligent in doing our job and reviewing the documents, well, we're going to probably be attached in that lawsuit too. And I don't want to get in that predicament. So I'm just bringing out the things that I think that are, and I'm not sure, I'm looking at the, it looks like it's an affidavit. Am I correct? Is that an affidavit from the Board of Directors?
As it was explained, as it was explained to me by the POA's attorney, this was a special meeting held, these are the minutes of that special meeting. Mr. Clifford is also a member of that board, so as part of the record, he can come up and verify that these other signatures are actually directors and board members. But these are the minutes of that board. Because they're minutes, they weren't required to be notarized, the signatures. Their minutes are usually not recorded at the courthouse, but these are the minutes from that special meeting regarding their discussion of the encroachment into the easement.
It doesn't say anywhere, or maybe I'm missing it, that these are minutes. This is, the headline reads, you know, unanimous written consent in lieu of a special meeting. So they didn't have a meeting. I'm not sure what you're referring to, you're kind of confusing me. Did they have a meeting or did they not have a meeting? Because it says it's in lieu of a meeting. So if they didn't have a meeting, how do they have minutes?
This was, I placed a column right before this meeting to the, their attorney.
Okay. I just, I don't want to be a stickler, I just want to make sure that we're doing things correctly. I've had a piece of property like this where it's on the corner and the house faces one side and I come in on the other side, a driveway, but my house number's, call out for the house is on this front side there where it's confusing because you would think the driveway is the, where the house has its address, where you pull into. But there's some houses that just face and still have that address and there's no access off that way. So I can see how this mistake can happen. And I've known that what they do is they put the pool in first, they don't put the structure, the screen room in, because a structure has to have the setbacks, but the pool being that it's open does not have that. Am I correct?
Are these questions about this application?
I'm getting to a point, Mr. Mayor.
So the pool, of course, this was back in 1998, some of the building codes have changed, but as I understand and as they've been previously processed, a swimming pool has to come in with either a screen enclosure or a fence around it with the code-required safety measures for that pool. And I do, I did go through the property file, the pool and the screen enclosure came in at the same time.
All right, well, I don't have any more questions.
You're done? Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I didn't say I was done. I said I do not have any more questions at this time.
You're done?
Okay.
All right. I have a, I have a statement, not a question. And I'm, I've been involved in this process for 15 years now. 12 years on the Plains Zone Commission almost and three years on the council. I want everybody out there to understand that the staff does their job and they do it well. I almost take a little bit of offense to some of the tone of the questions that were just asked. I want to make sure about their understands that the staff does their job and they do it well. I appreciate that you got the correction from FPNL when the mistake was made on the address, but that's normal, it's the way things work, the way things are done. So with that, I'm going to go on to open the floor for anyone who is in favor of this request to come forward. You make, yes?
My name is Ted Godfrey. And first I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to even speak briefly regarding this issue on Lot 45 in San Sebastian Springs. regarding this issue on Lot 45 in San Sebastian Springs. My wife, Joyce Jazz Gula, and I are in the process of building a home at 597 Cross Creek Circle in San Sebastian Springs. Our lot, a butts lot number 45, directly on the south side. The 5-foot utility easement being discussed here runs the length of both of our lots. It is our understanding that the Cliffords had purchased the home about four years ago, at which time the pool cage and the pool itself were both present in their present location. We also understand that there were discrepancies with some of the older surveys in San Sebastian Springs. We've been told as well that the pool was built sometime after the house was built. The construction of the pool enclosure over 13 feet closer to the property line than is permitted by regulations for RS-20 zoning districts predates the Cliffords. We see the situation leaves the board in an unenviable position of approving the request for a variance, which may very well be the best thing to do, yet still possibly set a precedent that others may use to their advantage. Obviously, in our opinion, the Cliffords are in no way responsible for the previous owner's violation of the setback regulations, nor should they be expected to bear any hardship to rectify the situation. The 13 feet of vegetation would certainly have given both lots far more privacy. Again, I'd like to thank you for my time.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this? Seeing none. Does the applicant have anything that they'd like to add?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Oh, you do? Okay. Wait till you get to the mic, if you would.
The only other thing I was going to say was that the board in San Sebastian Springs, excluding myself, is all Fishers. Henry Fisher is the developer. His wife is on the board. His two sons are on the board. So... And the association's attorney supplied all the information. And I, too, want to thank you because you did a great job catching that mistake from Florida Power and Light. And I agree with you. Outstanding people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Staff, would you like to make any comment?
If I could just correct one thing. It was Councilmember Gilliams that brought the FPNL mistake to our attention. So, just to make... For the record.
Okay. All right. Anyone from the board have any other questions that they'd like to raise or comments?
I just want to get clarification. The gentleman with the yellow shirt, you oppose it or you're for it? The gentleman that spoke? Yes. Yeah.
I'm for the resolution.
You are for the resolution? And you own Lot 45?
I am.
Do you own Lot 45?
I'm fairly sure that's the number of the lots, sir. He didn't come to the mic.
Okay. You'll have to come up to the front.
Would you just come on up and get you on the record, please?
You'll have to come up, sir. Sir, if you would, come up to the mic for us, please.
I'm fairly sure it's number 46 on the map, sir.
Okay. Your property abuts the pool?
It abuts the pool on the south side, yes.
Okay. So, you're to the south side?
Yes.
All right? Okay. And you're not against it?
Pardon me?
And you're not against it? You're for the resolution? You want to see it?
Yes, I am. I'd like to see them get the variance, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Damon, still finished? Mr. Councilmember Gilliams, you done?
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, I have no comments.
I'm sorry? Did I hear you say so?
I said I have no comments.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Thanks. All right. Let's have a motion. If someone will provide one, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
Now, second that.
Motion by Councilmember Malte, seconded by Vice Mayor Malte, seconded by Councilwoman Ferris.
Okay. Vice Mayor Malte?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferris?
Aye.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. I will now adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and re-adjourn the City Council meeting. I do that so I can hit that block of wood up here with that hammer. It's kind of fun sometimes. We're on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
What do we have on that consent agenda?
Yes. No?
No.
No one? Okay. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda.
Now, second that approval.
All right. The motion by Councilmember Gilliams, seconded by Councilwoman Ferris. There's money involved in that. Would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferris?
Here.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend the city manager and his staff on that CBG grant. That's what we need to see more of. Thank you very much, and thank you for your reaching out with the staff and getting that kind of money. Thank you.
Item number 11, Committee Reports and Appointments. Citizen Budget Review Board, I believe Councilmember Gilliams has done his appointment. Have you done yours yet?
No, but I have an appointee now.
You do?
Yes. I'd like to appoint Ralph E. Holmes.
Okay. Ralph D. Holmes?
E. as in elephant, Holmes.
Okay. Can you get his contact information to the city clerk after the meeting?
Yes.
So, she can contact him?
Certainly.
Okay. All right. Construction Board, Interviewing...
Mr. Mayor, before you go any further, I just want to announce that I picked Gilbert Lewin also as my appointee for the Budget Committee. Thank you.
All right. Good. And then 11B is the Construction Board. And we have, if I read this correctly, we have an alternate that we can move up to a regular position, if that's correct. And I would like to... I'll move that we appoint Richard Welch to the regular member position expiring on 9/30/2021.
May I second it?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That's taken care of. I do have one report. If I can find my full notice here. I went to the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments today, and we had a presentation by the lady who is responsible for the coordination of the census for St. Lucy and Martin County. Just so you know, we're going to have a meet on Friday with the Get the Count group for Indian River County. But there's some interesting things here, and it's time to really start thinking about this census. Each person that's counted in the state of Florida, and it's an interesting thing, represents $1,600 worth of federal money that's going to be spent whether we get it or don't. Some other state will get it. So, if the percentages that applied in the last census hold true, there was only 75% of the people were counted in St. Lucy County and 78% of the people were counted in Martin County. And I don't know what that transcends into Indian River County. But the actual number of federal funds that St. Lucy and Martin County gave up was almost a billion dollars. Think about that. Those funds are federal funds that probably went to Texas. I won't say New York because we have a bunch of New Yorkers here, and they'd be happy about that. But they went someplace else. They didn't come to Florida. And it's important that everybody here start thinking about this census and start thinking about getting through this. It's the way that the federal government determines how much money of their funds are going to be sent to each jurisdiction. It's also a way that they establish how many congressional seats we have, which is kind of important if we can get more congressional seats out of this when it goes through the process. I thought that $1,600 per person that's not counted, and that includes children under five. And only 5% of the children under five years old were counted in the 2010 census. I don't know how big that number is. I know in Indian River County, because the way I look around this room, most people are almost as old as I am, so we don't have a whole bunch of kids under five. But in places like Martin County and St. Lucy County, they do have a bunch of kids under five. And that's another $1,600 per person that they lost because they didn't get them counted. So, it's very important that we deal with that. I just wanted to kind of pass that on.
So, Mr. Mayor, you said that Martin County got how much?
Well, what they did, the combined loss to these two counties was almost a billion dollars. When she went through the whole process, it was almost a billion dollars. It was a gigantic... This was money that could have been made available to the state
Right.
as a result of the population in those two counties.
Two counties.
Now, I can't say they would have gotten it, but it's money that would have been made available to the state to use for grants like septic-to-sewer conversions, stormwater fixing, all that kind of stuff. That's all money that would have been provided to the state. Now, some of it has specific areas where it goes to, but it's a ton of money. So, it's important that we really work on this census and try to get it as accurate as we can.
So, make sure everybody gets counted.
Make sure everybody gets counted.
All right.
When you get your little thing, don't throw it in the trash. Okay? All right. Now, we're on to public hearings. And we do have a public hearing. Now, I'm going to make a motion right now because we tabled this. I'm going to move that we remove from the table ordinance number 01907 for the second public hearing, for a public hearing and a second reading of that ordinance. Do I have a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, we've removed it from the table. Now, if the city staff would like to introduce that?
Let me get started. An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 86, Article 3, by establishing a definition for recyclable materials and amending the Land Development Code, Article 22, Language and Definitions, by establishing definitions and land use classifications for recycling or materials recovery facilities, and amending Article 5, Zoning District Regulations, by establishing recycling or materials recovery facilities as conditional uses in the industrial zoning district, and amending Article 6, Conditional Use Criteria, by establishing specific conditions for recycling or materials recovery facilities, providing for repeal of conflicting provisions, severability, providing for codification, providing for scribners errors, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Staff presentation, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, this was tabled for two items. One, to address the subjective language of adequate and at the direction of council to tie in Section 4 with Sections 5, 6, and 7. When it came to the buffers and the 48-hour storage, staff took those under advisement, and the revised language in your packet is in blue from the language in the stricken language, the word adequate, from the previous public hearing. And that was the only modification to this ordinance as directed by council at the previous meeting.
Okay. And on item number 7, on page 169 of our handout, at the end of that item, the open parentheses C closed, open parentheses 1 closed, or greater was added. That's not marked in blue, but that was added.
It is blue in mine.
Oh, it's blue in yours. It's not blue in mine.
I apologize.
No, that's no big deal.
No, it's blue. It's blue.
Yeah. It's blue in yours? It's not blue in mine.
It's blue in mine.
Okay. So, we're fine with that. And, okay. Any other staff information that you'd like to bring forward on this?
We just will look at direction for council through this hearing and public comments.
Okay. I'll open this up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Rebecca?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Rebecca Growhall, I'm here on behalf of MBV Engineering, 1835 20th Street in Vero Beach, as well as our applicant, Shannon Cook, who's a longtime property owner and resident of the city of Sebastian. He's a local businessman. He's about a Little League coach here in the city. Tonight, we're really asking consideration for three items on the ordinance. And our client, Mr. Cook, has provided a letter. I think you were all given a copy of that. If not, I have extras, and I'll be happy to give those to the clerk and to the dais. The first item we're asking for is consideration of 96 hours versus the 48. The 48 hours was not part of our text amendment request. We're not sure what the justification or any validation of that number is. Our client has asked and requested that that be extended to 96 hours. We think that's within reason. Secondly, is we'd like to ask that cars would be allowed as part of his recycling business. This is an industrial parking lot or industrial zoning classification. If you go back to the Table of Permitted Uses, there are a number of things that are allowed in that, including the use of parking lots, as well as vehicular sales, service, maintenance of all kind. Those are all uses that are allowed within the industrial parks. I did hear some feedback that there's a perception that he may be crushing cars on site. Here to refute that wholeheartedly, there's going to be no crushing, as well as no burning or smelting of those materials. I've also heard some feedback that there's a possibility that he would be disassembling the cars. And I can tell you that is also not the case. Those cars in a recycling value have a much higher value as a whole car being put onto a flatbed trailer and basically removed from the site. As part of that, when he takes in cars, he has titles to those vehicles or the appropriate equivalent materials for that. So, it's not a junk business, no matter what that perception would be. And also, our client has agreed that those cars are there as really a wholesale value only, that there's going to be no retail on that site. There's no pulling apart for resales to the public or any type of consumer. Again, those cars are removed wholly. Lastly, and you brought this up in the ordinance, in the screening where it was added, and this is the bottom of page or the top of page 169 on number 7, where the words "or greater" was added, that seems to be as ambivalent as the previously removed "adequate" language from the thing. So, we're just asking that that be stricken out of there. The buffers are well established in Section 53-3.14, number 6. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions from anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, the previous hearing that we had on this, this is our second hearing, right?
Yes.
And did we resend notices to the property owners about the modification that you want to make?
Mr. Mayor, this is, if I may, this is not an application for a site plan. This is a modification to an ordinance.
Oh, and it's... Okay. So, this is not going to require the neighbors to know that there's going to be...
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this addresses all industrial lands in the city, not a site.
Gotcha. Okay. Do you have a copy of the letter? Because I don't see it in my father's... Do you have a copy?
I do have a copy.
It was in the box. Yeah. You've got it. I've got it.
No, I didn't get that.
Everybody else's got it. It was in the box on Monday, or maybe last week.
Well, in your agenda packet, at the beginning of that item, I stuck it in there, but it was not bound in the agenda packet, but it was placed inside the beginning of the item to catch your eye.
Gotcha. No, I didn't see it.[1682.04] No, I didn't see it. Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome.
Well, I'd like to hear from the city manager as to his feelings about modifying the cars be allowed, what his thoughts are.
Yeah, we can ask for a staff summary, and then we can talk later. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay. Rebecca, thank you. If we have any questions... Oh, I do have one question for you. And I would tell you, this is a, not one of those quasi-judicial things that requires that we do an ex parte communication, but I have had a conversation with Rebecca about this. And I just want to reiterate something you told me, that he intends to have a box, a piece of equipment that actually drains the fluids and liquids from the cars that are brought in, and it will capture all of those things.
Correct.
Okay. You don't need to come up. That's okay.
And if I could just, you know, the primary containment system, and that's all a regulated piece of equipment, and all the things that come off of that car as far as the fluids are tightly regulated towards their storage and their disposal. This ordinance also makes references to a secondary containment area. I don't know why we would have a secondary containment area if he wasn't allowed for the cars. So, again, it's just, we'd like some clarification. Thank you.
Well, the secondary is for in case the primary fails. That's kind of standard process to do that.
Right. I understand that. We're willing to provide both primary, secondary, tertiary, whatever's needed.
Okay. So, we can go to 10, right? That's all right?
Pardon me?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Would the staff like to provide a summary, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. So, we, in my initial discussions with the applicant and MBV, we were adamant that we weren't going to allow automobiles, RVs, and that in that application. The statement that was made to the applicant at this time was, "I wasn't writing..." We would not revise an ordinance to make it a warrior salvage ordinance. This was an ordinance to affect the entire city, regardless of the exact location of the site. This ordinance affects all industrial lands in the city. And in this ordinance, it's two acres or greater. So, we didn't want to write an ordinance where you would have automobile salvage in other areas at the airport or off of High Street or areas which was zoned industrial. So, this wasn't a warrior salvage ordinance. This is a City of Sebastian ordinance amendment to allow for the removal of products that have resale value, not to be storing cars. And I can also reiterate that in the conversations with the applicant, his comment to me was, "It's gone the next day." So, I'm not understanding why the 48 hours is now an issue. 96 hours, it's up to the council. But I'm, you know, we based this ordinance on conversations we had with the city attorney was there, I was there, the planning and zoning staff was there. We tried to accommodate as many items as we could because we think it's a good thing to recycle. But we don't want to have his cars stacked up next to High Street or next to the airport because that's what would be allowed if you changed this ordinance. But it's entirely up to council. This is staff's recommendation only.
Okay. And the 48-hour limitation within this is what stops them from being stacked up in there. Is that correct?
Well, it just doesn't allow them to stack up over time. The council asked us, "How are you going to monitor the 48 hours?" Well, that's going to be tough, and monitoring 96 hours will be even harder.
Yeah.
Beginning, this is just staff's recommendation. We have, we're only looking out for the city's best interest.
I'm just trying to get a feel for, you might want to...
Absolutely. This is, what is interesting, is this ordinance hasn't been changed since October, when it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board. It has been read the exact same in October to the Planning and Zoning Board. It was brought to you, this council, in November. It was also brought to you in December, where you asked for clarification of certain items, which is what we've done. And now, we're asking to completely modify it at this point. I think the important piece of information that I'd like this council to consider is that we have a code that defines junk. And if we start with junk, and that definition of junk states that motor vehicles are not allowed, or are defined as junk, let me start there, and that junk yards and salvage yards are prohibited in the city of Sebastian. Now, that is in our industrial zoning code, but that is also part of our comprehensive plan. So, if we now remove motor vehicles from the definition of junk, well, we might as well just erase this whole definition of junk from our code, but then we are, then allowing, in my opinion, junk yards and salvage yards to occur in the city of Sebastian. We're going to have to modify the comprehensive plan. I mean, this is my opinion. I believe it's supported by our attorney, since he was in the exact same meetings as I was. But please feel free to chime in if you'd like. And as far as the buffer, I know there's been numerous discussions by this council about making sure that we had adequate buffering from our non-commercial sites that are adjacent to recycling centers. And so, we just wanted to more clarify as to which part of that code that was already in there, the article was already in there and part of the ordinance, which is just fine. But we wanted to also clarify exactly which part of that refers to it, which is the one... Now, I've messed up all my papers. I do apologize as I shuffle through these papers. I believe it's 1C, which really gives you that good buffer, or really identifies the type of buffer that we should have between a recycling facility, an industrial facility, and a non-commercial site. And so, that's really all of the information we put in there. As far as the 48 hours, that was something that was discussed with the planning and zoning. They felt comfortable with those hours, and that is what has been brought forward to all of you. So, if you'd like to make any of those modifications, please let me know.
Thank you. Anybody up here have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm a little disturbed that they're changing it. I was just reading what she just said about the definition of junk, and it's right up there front. I'm concerned, one, about coming in at the ninth inning and changing that. I don't think I'll be for that. And the other thing is the fact that changing it from 46 to 96 hours, I'd probably be against that, too.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. You can take that as a motion, Mr. Mayor.
So, are you saying to pass it as presented?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless the applicant wants to withdraw and then start all over, and then we go through the process again, so that everybody, you know...
That's already been too far along the lines to do that.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah. You can approach. That's fine.
Mr. Mayor, if you want to...
I'm sorry?
For the record, if you want to open it up for public comment, if that's a...
I will open it up for public comment. Yes.
Sir, my intentions on this, back from the beginning, starting in 2017, is when this started, is when I put my first pre-app meeting was in 2017. And then, we moved to a pre-app application in 2018. I turned my paperwork in 2018 for site plans. I went all the way to 2019 on my second application. Never once, ever was there discussed that there was a problem with the zoning, ever once, until 2019, when I met the city manager for the first time, and he said, "It's in black and white right here that there is no salvage yard or no junk yards allowed in the city." Okay? That was the first time that was introduced to me. But as I told him then, I am not, by no means in any way, a junkyard or a salvage yard. Let me give a great definition here, and it's in the letter that I wrote to you guys. The definition of a salvage yard or a junkyard would be you'd have to be able to buy something there. You'd have to go walk into my yard and buy an engine out of that car, or buy a door off of that car, or buy a tire. I put in this letter here, if you're concerned about it being a junkyard or a salvage yard, which it is not, it is a recycling facility, there is no way in the modern world to define a recycling material by the item. If you try to say, "I can recycle this, I can recycle that," but not this, not that, there's a billion items out there. It can't be done. The only way to do that is by the material it's made of. If you're a metal recycler, you are a metal recycler. If you're a plastic recycler, you're a plastic recycler. Everybody has their rights to come in here and should be approved by that. Now, an automobile is no longer, by definition of the state, when you, when I get the paperwork, the appropriate paperwork, and I buy the vehicles, I take it to the state, I turn it in, and by definition of the state, this is no longer a motor vehicle. It has, it has to be recycled. It can no longer hit the roads ever again. That is by state definition. Okay? And to approach the concerns of it being a salvage yard or junkyard, I put in this letter here, "Let's stop that. Let's get everybody's mind off of that by saying this. I am not allowed to sell anything on site." It's in the letter. Otherwise, if somebody comes to my yard and says, "Hey, can I buy that door right there off of a car?" No, you cannot. Nothing's for sale in this yard. I only buy. I do not sell. That in 100% eliminates the possibility of having a salvage or a junkyard, because by definition, that's what they do. Even he just said just a minute ago, the city manager said, "To sell stuff, to sell parts." That's not what I'm there to do. I'm there to buy stuff and not sell. And the cars is a metal. That's what they are. They're the most recycled item there is in the United States. Now, you have to, as a metal recycler, you have to have cars. It is the most important part. Otherwise, when I buy a vehicle, I take it and I put it with the washers, the dryers, everything else, in a closed truck. It's a big, it's a tall truck sides, open top. I put the cars and I put the metals on top of it. By putting the cars in there, I raise the price of all the other metals in there because I'm putting vehicles in there that had the aluminums in it, that had the copper wires in it, and the processors know that. So, when I put a certain amount of cars in my loads, it brings the rest of my materials to be worth more money. It's a must-have item in a metal recyclers facility. You have to have it. And the junk definition, when you go back to the junk definition that city staff is talking about, it says in the junk definition that you're not allowed to have cans, barrels, all types of things it says in that. But yet, in the new regulation for the new definition for recycling, all those items were taken out of the junk and put in there except for cars. Otherwise, the whole definition, if you look it up under junk, has been taken out of that and put in to the new definition. They only excluded cars. That's it. All the other items in that, in that same exact junk definition was taken out and put in the new definition. The only thing that was avoided was cars. And there's really, that is number one item of recycling. You will not see these cars, and they will not be things sold off of them. They won't be stacked up. I won't even put them on top of each other. In the city of Sebastian, with a population of approximately 22,000 people, I'll be lucky if I get 15 cars a month, if I'm lucky. Okay? And now, keep in mind, these cars are coming off from the side of the houses that you don't want to see. These cars are coming out of the fields over here you don't want to see. These cars are in our city now and are eyesore. And they're an eyesore in our public facilities. They're an eyesore in our residential areas. They will no longer be there. They'll be taken, put in my truck, and they'll be sent out. And I've been asking, and it was from day one in my pre-app application for vehicles in 2017. This was something that I always had planned on doing, is always part of the plan, and it's a must. And by definition of you don't want a junkyard, you don't want a salvage yard, there's no way of doing that by saying, "You can't recycle this, you can't recycle that." You have to do it by what it's made of. And you have to do it by saying, "You cannot sell something," because that's what makes a junkyard. If you look at any other way, there's no other way of stopping it except for that. You'd have, like I mentioned, you'd have teeth. Did you sell something in the yard? You broke the rules. You know? You can, that's easy to govern, too, because you could set a sting operation up. You could send somebody to my yard to try to buy something. And if I sold it, I broke the rules. It's very easy to govern it that way. I put in this letter that I sent to you guys, when you read it, that it's much easier to govern with a lot less headaches to the city if you don't have to police me because of the situations, you know? Is he doing, is he selling, is he doing this? Because right now, in the definition we have right now, it does not say, "I can't sell things." It doesn't say that, which means I could sell things. By, I'm asking for more rules, not less. I'm asking you to tell me I can't sell nothing. I'm asking you to say, "Okay, you can't be a junkyard. You cannot sell anything to anybody. You can't do it. You have to ship it offsite. You got to get rid of it." And the 96-hour thing, the 48-hour idea is not bad. I mean, I'm not opposed to that time limit because I understand that you want to wait to tell me you can't have that pile there for more than this amount of time. But the only reason I'm asking for consideration from the council here on that item is because, let's say my crane, which, I'm sorry, I did not mean to call it that. Let me correct that. It is a hydraulic excavator. It is not a crane. My excavator, let's say, for instance, I blow a track off my excavator. In our town, it's a very small town, it's difficult to get heavy equipment repaired. It may take me 24 hours to 48 hours to fix that piece of machinery. I'm just asking for a little bit of leniency so I can obey the rules and do it properly and not break the rules. I don't want to break rules. If, I am 100% for this, yeah, I've been here forever. I love this place. I won't do nothing to harm it. I want this ordinance to be proper. And in this letter, this is what I wrote. I think the staff has done their job. I think if we get together, we're very, very close. We're only a couple of small items off. If you do not want to see a vehicle, tell me that. And I'll put it behind something. I'll do whatever it takes, but I have to have the vehicles. And they are, I want to make one giant point. A vehicle is no different than a washing machine when it's done. There's no difference. There's zero difference. A junkyard sells a part off a washing machine. A junkyard sells a part off a lawnmower. They'll sell a lawnmower, they'll sell anything you've got in sight. That's what makes a junkyard and a salvage yard. And I agree with you. I don't want that in my city right now either. But I do want a recycling facility, and that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for a recycling facility. And I'm not asking to be restricted what kind of metal I can do, because you can't name it. You can't itemize it by the item because there's billions of them. But there's only a few recyclable products, which means plastic, cardboard, metal.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, very much. I appreciate your time.
Anyone else in public want to come forward?
This started with a gentleman coming here to crush concrete interior of a building, take road grindings, and reprocess. Now, we're into a car recycling business. Now, I've got people that I know that were in that business. They've got machines that can take a whole car, shred it down into small containers separated. They also have a device that you put a car under it hydraulically, you compress it down to about a foot and a half, you stack about eight of these on a flatbed and take it away. Now, anything of that nature, he mentioned a crane, but he switched it over to some sort of a bucket loader or a payload, which will be capable of crushing a car down to a certain level, which means I'm not going to take a tractor trailer and put two cars and then stack scrap on it. I'm going to crush those cars, and I'm going to have six cars on that truck. And then, I'm going to put other materials on it. It's started out very simple, busting up concrete recycling. And he says he's not selling? I'm crushing up metal for one reason. I'm selling it, not on site, but I'm selling it. I don't know where this is really going. What has the county got as their ordinances? Did we look into that? Do they allow crushing of vehicles? We've got shredders. You literally take a car, there's magnets, there's air, there's everything. It shreds the car. It's a lousy, noisy machine. Two and a half acres, I don't think you'd invest in something of that size. But he's going to have to be compacting these vehicles to ship them out. It's not profitable to put four cars not touched on a trailer to sell for scrap weight. I think we should look a little further into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Public area, the public comments closed. Staff, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just look for council direction, how they would...
Pardon me. We will look for council direction, how they would like... Mr. Carl, I'm sorry. I had a gentleman stood up back there, and I missed him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I let you, hold on for a second.
Good evening. Aaron Bowles, MBV Engineering, 1835 20th Street, Vero Beach. I just wanted to sort of maybe add a couple items. We've been very appreciative of staff's time and efforts in, over the last couple of years to get to where we are. I would like to address a couple items, again, just to back up what Shannon had said regarding the 96-hour. I think these couple minor modifications that we're looking for aren't anything excessive. But the 96-hour, not only for equipment breaking down, but sort of what was going through my head was, on the weekends, if you have a delivery on a Friday, you have Saturday, Sunday, you know, they deliver, they pick up on Monday. So, that's one idea. The concrete recycling that the previous gentleman had brought up, that's the first that we've heard of that. I'm not familiar with that. I did check with Shannon. He said he was not considering concrete recycling on this site. The crushing of the cars, the recycling, the compacting, that's not an item that Shannon is proposing to do as well. It's simply stacking and shipping offsite. So, that's an item that we just wanted to just confirm that we're not doing. Let me see what other I had. The landscaping item, the, I think that removal of the "or greater" item or addition, I think is reasonable. We have the code. There's been discussions. Lisa and I have been trying to have some discussions. We've just not been connecting the last few days. That's partly my bad for not being able to answer her phone calls. But that's sort of what we were wanting to talk about a little bit. And I guess the automobiles going into, just discussing that one item. Part of Shannon's request has been automobiles. And I know there's been discussions back and forth. But I'm not 100% sure that removal of automobiles is something that we were thinking was in this item. They just talked about scrap metals and, and other items that are approved. Cars are scrap metals. But that's something I think we need to ensure he has if we need to postpone it to clarify that a little more. I think that's probably where Shannon would want to go, but we would prefer to just, just have that clarified in this ordinance tonight that, that we can't have automobiles. That is, automobile is considered a scrap metal, and, which would be similar to other scrap metals where we could just place it and, and remove it. I think that was the only thing, the only items I wanted to discuss. If you have any questions, I'm here, or if Shannon can answer more questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Mayor, City Manager.
So, one second. Mr. Mayor, so, the, the point is, it's not just automobiles that we excluded. We excluded RVs and trailers and boats and other recreational vehicles. I want to make sure the council realizes this is an ordinance change for the entire industrial area of the city of Sebastian. This isn't a warrior salvage or ordinance. Although he has a site plan he wants to bring forward for this product, this is something you're considering for Sebastian as a whole. If you want to revise, as Ms. Fraser said, revise it to allow automobiles, RVs, trailers, we will also need to revise the comprehensive plan. I can tell you that I, in my meetings with the applicant, I made it clear in that meeting before he paid to have the ordinance revision looked at, that we were not going to allow automobiles. Our conversation started out with, with refrigerators and stoves and copper. An hour later, well, somebody may bring a car in on a flatbed. Well, maybe somebody will drag one in on a rope. So, it was, it did not start out my conversation with him. I want to be clear that it didn't start out. He's always asked for automobiles. And I've got myself, the attorney, everyone that was there. It wasn't till the end that automobiles was, it, it kept growing. From, I don't need a backhoe, I don't need a crane, to, well, I might have to load a trailer with a crane. So, as the conversation progressed, it expanded. And I, and I specifically told the applicant that I'm not writing a warrior salvage ordinance. This is for the city of Sebastian. I'm not trying to be argumentative. I want the council to know the facts of the progression of the conversation. So, you know, these are things that we, we laid out. And he proceeded to pay the $1,500 or whatever the fee was for the ordinance change. And that's, and I'd ask staff to consider that, or council to consider that, this is an ordinance for the entire industrial area of the city.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm going to now close. We've already finished with the public input. I'm sorry, we've already finished, no. We've already finished with the public input, I'm sorry. I really am. We can't, I can't reopen it, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I just also wanted to point out for the council that you have always had a copy of the applicant's application and what they asked us to consider. And you will not find anything in there regarding automobiles or motor vehicles. I just wanted to point that out to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close the hearing, and it's now at the council deliberations. Anyone want to...
Mayor, I don't have a problem with having the applicant coming back up here. I, I mean, I understand your procedures. But maybe the other council may, he may have something he wants to add. If it's only going to take 30 seconds, I want him to have his due process.
Okay, do a, just to make it legal, do a point of order.
Okay, point of order, Mr. Mayor. You want to go ahead and...
What you would like to do is give the applicant some additional time?
The additional time to come out and give him another 30 seconds, and let's hear him, give him his due process, and let you go ahead and decide.
I'll allow that. You can come forward.
Yeah, come on up, let's, let's...
It's just, we need to give people an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Not, not all three of you, just the applicant.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just him.
Rebecca, Rebecca, just the applicant.
Yeah.
Response to Mr. City Manager here. I did not meet the city manager until 2019 in February. I made my pre-app in 17, in 2017. And there was vehicles on there. I do have the writing of automobiles from my engineers. We do have record of it, where it was brought in front of them for automobiles in 2017 and 2018. I never heard, I, I turned in my original site plan for approvals after my pre-app meeting, after I met with the city. I turned in my site plan, and I got it back. I got all the comments back from, from the engineers. I, I readdressed it again. And in 2019, I got the comment back to have this meeting, the first time I met the city manager, where he threw a piece of paper on the table that said that there was, it's in black and white, there's no salvage yard or junkyard allowed. It's in black and white. This is two years later, it wasn't. It was not ever, ever in any way did I say I couldn't do cars. Never did that come up. I would have never applied for this. I would never have done this in that case. I mean, cars are crucial. And again, it's, it's the problem of having a junkyard or salvage yard is what the city staff is worried about. And I understand that. And I want to address that problem with you. That's the reason I'm asking for this to be tabled until next time, so we can put in, I will not, or anybody else in this zoning will not be a junkyard. Because you've got to remember, it keeps going back to junkyard or salvage yard, but this is a whole thing for recycling. Plastic, cardboard, it could be any of the above.
Okay, were you going to make any other new points? You already went over that.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making sure that you know that...
Okay.
This started in 2017. I didn't meet the manager until 2019. You know, so I want to make sure that cars were always on the site, always planned on doing it. And I even put on the site plans that I had already got the comments back on. And I'm in my second comment, I'm back in my second approval. I've already paid the engineers, offsite engineers, I've already paid them for the approvals of it twice.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other deliberations?
All right, so this is closed forever?
The public, public input, yes, the hearing's closed. Can you, yeah, get your mic.
I'd like to ask staff about the comp plan and how it affects that. Would you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. The comp plan itself in the industrial zoning area of land use, I'm sorry, of the comp plan, it specifically states, once again, and I know it's somewhere in my mess, and I apologize, I'll pull it out. But it states that junkyards and salvage yards are prohibited in the city of Sebastian. I mean, it's, it's almost virtually the same words that are in the industrial zoning section of our land development code. And I, and I want to reiterate again that though Mr. Cook does state that he started his discussions and submittals with the city staff back in 17, there was a continuous conversation requesting more information in order to get clarification, excuse me, as to what exactly the plans were for the property. And at no time, it was always told recycling, 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 at no time were automobiles brought up. It wasn't until a site plan was submitted that stated salvage yard that we said, that is not acceptable in the city of Sebastian. So I'm very sorry we had to issue a deny a letter.
Do you have the application in front of you?
Yes, I do, sir. Hold on.
Okay. Down on the C, detailed description of proposed activity, purpose of the requested permit. Can you read that underneath there, what it says?
I'm sorry, Mr....
Now, who made that application out?
I'm going to find it for you, just hold on.
That's on page 171 of our booklet.
There you go.
I got it. I'm sorry, sir, go right ahead.
So, on the C, on the beginning, front page of that application, it says, the detailed description of the proposed activity. And then, who filled that out?
They did, sir.
They did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's their, can you read that, what they filled out?
Detailed description, I've got it, yes, sir. A facility where recyclable materials are sorted and temporarily stored prior to delivery to a permanent site for reuse and/or processing into new products.
So, what you're saying is if they wanted to do vehicles and, and modify it like they are, that would have been in there?
It certainly possibly should have in order for us to consider such a modification.
Okay.
I, I mean, I would have appreciated it, since we had had a meeting with them stating quite vehemently that vehicles and boats and trailers were not allowed because of the definition of junk.
Also, on page 174 of our booklet, of page 257, supplemental information, land development code amendment. We're on the same page?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The current text creates a zoning classification and definition for the recycling industry, right? Recognizing it as a separate distinct industry from scrap or junkyards, right?
That's correct.
And that's part of their application?
Yes, sir.
They filled that out?
Yes, sir.
Their engineer filled that out?
Engineer planner, I'm, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. And then it says, is the proposed amendment consistent with the elements of the comp plan? If not, and which one? While the comp plan references salvage yards as prohibited, this action seeks to separate the recycling industry from the salvage business. That's in their application?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I, I, on the, on page 176, who typed that up? It doesn't say, it says proposed text, and it shows, looks like land development code, sections, definitions, industrial district, permitted uses, conditional uses. Who, who provided that?
There, this is all part of their application, sir.
So the engineer provided that?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Okay. And it says, describe the impact of the proposed change. Says distinct from junk and salvage uses which are considered to be a nuisance. Right?
That's correct.
This amendment seeks to acknowledge the recycling industry as a separate and distinct from junk. Then down below, it says this industry comprises of establishments primarily engaged in open operating facilities for separating and sorting recyclable materials from non-hazardous waste streams, and garbage, et cetera. To operating facilities where commingled recycled material, recyclable materials such as paper, plastic, cans, metals are sorted into this distinct category. Then it goes on... Mr. Mayor, the application basically, to me, looks like it's recycling. I understand that. But I'm, I'm having a hard time trying to shoehorn the, the...
Okay. Do you want to give the other two people an opportunity to...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You got something you'd like to say? Councilman first.
Lisa, could you read a short definition again of junk? And how metals are separated?
It's not short, it's, if you look on page 167, the junk is defined there.
Because, I mean, we're obviously advocates of recycling, and we don't want junkyards. I mean, this seems to be a little, getting a little feudal, so...
If you'd like me to read it, ma'am? It's not short. But I, I do want to express that, you know, recycling materials, what can be recycled today is, you know, hopefully small compared to tomorrow. Because all of us would like to see things being able to be repurposed and recycled. And we don't want to eliminate or limit our ability to do so. The things that were exempted from the junk definition were just exempted from the junk definition, correct? So if you look at the junk definition, it does not say plastics. Plastics are allowed to be recycled. Paper is allowed to be recycled. What we removed from the junk definition are items that we feel don't meet the definition of junk any longer, that they can be recycled. But things like mattresses or cloth, motor vehicles, those type of items, we felt kept with the intent that the city put in place many years ago regarding junkyards and salvage yards. I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's what we did. Please let me know if you'd like to do something else.
Is that it?
I suppose so.
Yeah, Charles, you have any?
Lisa, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How many industrial areas do we have here in Sebastian?
Chris Thor.
We, we have, I, that's why I supplied you with the map.
You have the strip down by the railroad track as well?
That's correct. By the airport.
High Street, airport in this area.
That's correct.
This area.
The, the area by the dump, by the transfer station.
Yeah. If you look in, in the gray, there's the area by the transfer station. There's the import, airport industrial, plus it has standard industrial. And then the strip in the, along 512 and the split, which includes High Street and so forth.
And then we have this, this by the Fishers.
And then the stretch along the railroad tracks south of that.
512 is pretty much built out, that's a small industrial. It's a very small area.
I know, but that, we need to change that someday.
It's a very small area. You look at the other, you're not going to be allowing that out in the airport. It's not, it's just not feasible. The only other place is off of Roland where the junkyard, where the recycling places or the transfer station is.
What's the location like, if you would please?
Where the transfer station is. So, we have a limited area that there could be recyclable areas.
Well, any place that's defined as industrial under this definition would be able to be, to get a conditional use permit for that. So any of these four areas that are defined as industrial, actually, if you, if you separate the two that are in the south area down there, those areas, any, this would apply to any of those industrial defined areas. Not the airport industrial, but the standard industrial, which is the dark gray on the map. I don't know. If anybody out there wants to see the map, we might be able to stick one up on the overhead or something, but I don't know, so...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the parcel here. It's highlighted in green, correct?
Yes, they're in dark gray.
Okay.
The industrial areas are in dark gray.
The parcel itself is not, I'm sorry.
The little parcel by the transfer station, which is where this is talking about, then the area north, northwest of the airport. And then the area in the, in the, along the eastbound 512 corridor, up to the westbound 512, and then over along Harrison Street and so forth. And then the area on the railroad tracks south that starts south of Manley Avenue and runs down along railroad tracks.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Gilliam, I'm sorry. The site itself is not highlighted on this map. This is, this is our zoning map.
Yeah.
So, it's not highlighted in the map, because it's, it affects all of the industrial zoning areas.
Got you.
Okay? So the, the green parcel you're seeing is actually a county in, in peace, it's a conservation area.
Conservation. That's what I thought that was.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And let me, Mr. Mayor, Indian River County, they do something like this on the administrative hearings? No, I mean, it's administrative approval? Is that how that works with them?
I'm not sure exactly how they do it, but when I look behind the transfer station at what they've got back there inside Indian River County, I'm not really sure I care how they do it.
Let me ask you this.
If you've ever looked behind the transfer station...
I, I understand staff's position about, you know, because it's going to affect all the industrial area. Maybe we should have a different type of zoning, like heavy industrial, where it's specifically...
But we can't...
I understand, he's got an application.
We got this, we got to deal with this, so, yeah. But that might not be an inappropriate thing to think about at some point in time, but it's not something we can do right now.
And that could be addressed on the comprehensive point.
I mean, Vice Mayor, if you have any other questions?
No, I'm just... I'd really like a little more time to study this myself, but I'll leave it up to the council what they want to do.
You looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I'm going to go ahead and, I don't want to see it modified. I mean, if they want to proceed with the recycling, I'm okay with that. So, do you want me to reflect my motion to not include the...
No, your motion would reflect, your motion would be based on the status of this revised conditional use permit definition that was provided to us. So you would be providing a motion to either approve or disapprove ordinance O-1907 either as presented or as modified.
And this is going to include the vehicles and the...
It's as it's presented to the staff. Whether, so if you choose to make a modification to it, then you can provide it as modified and define the modification, or if you choose to make a motion that does not modify it, then you make a motion to approve it as submitted.
It doesn't, this currently does not include vehicles.
I understand that, yeah.
Let me just check something here. Does that have the 46 to 96 hours?
It currently has, as submitted to us, it has the 48 hours.
It has the 48, I see. Okay. Okay. And the or greater, that was added?
That's there, yes.
The stuff that's included?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I'll go ahead and proceed with the motion to approve subject to removing the junk vehicles.
They're not in there.
They're not in there?
No.
Because I'm seeing vehicles in trailer, boats, and other...
That's under definition of junk.
Junk?
Yeah. And junk is exempted from this.
Okay.
Conditional use.
So then, if I proceed with the motion to approve, then the 48 hours is going to stay?
Yes. Yeah, you can proceed with a motion to approve it as submitted, and it will read exactly what it says in here.
Okay.
Or you can say, "As submitted with these changes," or a motion to approve it.
To get it started, I'll go ahead and submit a motion to approve with this stuff right here in front of us.
As submitted.
As submitted.
All right. Do I have a second on that?
I would approve if modifications open for discussion.
Okay, you're going to, you can second it for discussion purposes, if you choose. It doesn't require that you vote in favor of what his motion is.
Then let me do that. Let me second.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Gilliam that we approve as submitted, seconded by Councilmember Ferris. Okay, now, discussion on that motion.
You okay with it, Mr. Mayor? As written?
I'm actually, yeah, I might offer an amendment, but that's primarily the or greater thing, but I'll deal with that later. After, let's, because she's pushed her mic open and she's kind of thinking about what to say, so I'm waiting for her.
Metals, metals, the definition of metals, and I can't help but lean to the fact that automobiles are a huge metal component and need to be removed and recycled. So that's kind of where I'm at with this on-the-fence thing. I'm all for the 48 hours. Everything else seems fine, so that's where I'm at.
Okay. Small. I'll go along with it. Okay. Now, is that, on your part, is that an amendment that you'd like to make to that motion?
It is.
Okay, so you're moving to amend the motion to include automobiles?
I am.
But you don't have to. We vote on the amendment before we vote on the motion, so...
You guys say.
Yeah. So... I'll second your amendment for discussion purposes. Okay. Has anyone got any questions about that?
I have no questions about that.
Excuse me?
So you're amending it to allow vehicles?
Her amendment is that we, she's proposing amendment to your motion that we allow vehicles.
What's the meaning of a vehicle truck?
Automobiles, metal, heavy metal cars. I think Shannon made a really good point about cars being left out in the public when they're huge recyclable materials, and we're talking about recycling here. We're not talking about junkyards. I can understand that, and there are industrial shaded areas that are concerned to me as well as a comprehensive plan. It gets bigger and bigger, so I get that, but for the sheer purpose of this, that's just what I'm thinking.
I just, after reading the application, I'm having a hard time with that. The application came in under the disguise of recycling, and I'm okay with that. I think we need recycling, but I'm not for junkyards, I'm not for scrap yards, I'm not for that. I think maybe we can come back later on and look at the comp plan and amend the comp plan for heavy industrial, and we can deal with that later, but I just see the application saying recyclables, recyclables. This is now the second hearing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just having a hard time slipping that in underneath.
Okay. Any more comments? Okay, let's have a roll call on the amendment. The amendment is, I'll repeat that, is that it allows recycling of automobiles. I'm thinking that it's up to the staff if that passes to define the definition of an automobile. Is that...
Well, it's a little bit more involved because of the inconsistency with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
We actually don't have the authority to pass an ordinance that is inconsistent, so I think if that's where council wants to go with this amendment, I think your direction needs to be to have community development pursue a modification of the comprehensive plan first.
Okay. Let's see if this passes. All right. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ferris?
Aye.
Mayor Dodd?
No.
Vice Mayor Maude?
Aye.
Okay, and Councilmember Gilliam?
No.
The motion fails to pass.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the main motion to approve it as submitted, I am going to offer an amendment, if I can, if I may, that the word or greater be removed from section... I got to find that now.
Page 169.
Seven point.
169, page 169.
On page 169.
I'll second that amendment. Is that the only amendment?
I just have a problem with those nebulous things like or greater or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, did you have...
I've been on the Plains Zoning Commission a long time. How do you define or greater?
Mr. Mayor, did you have another amendment, just that?
No, that's it.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's have a roll call on that, please.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maude?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferris?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Now, on the main motion, let's have a roll call on that, please.
Well, would you restate the main motion, please?
The main motion, I'll restate it. The main motion that was presented by Councilmember Gilliam was that we approve ordinance number O-1907 as submitted by staff, plus the amendment.
Correct.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Ferris.
Correct. Okay.
Correct. Councilmember Ferris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maude?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gilliam?
Yes.
The motion carries.
That was a tough one. All right. Unfinished business. Item 13A. Before we get started on this, because I anticipate some... This is, and I'm going to do something here to try to push this along. This is only, only a moratorium exemption to allow the city manager to test the WOW product in a waterboard or aquatic arena. That's all it is. And so I'm going to move that we exempt the city manager from the spraying ordinance for the purposes of testing the herbicide product. If that's, if I can get a second on that for discussion purposes.
Second for discussion.
All right. And once again, I want everybody out there to understand, we're only talking about providing an exemption to city manager. He has done a test in a non-aquatic environment. That product has worked very well. He has all the information about it. I've heard people complain that they don't know about it, and quite frankly, not everybody can know everything. We have to assume that our staff is doing their job, and I'm very comfortable that he's doing a Herculean job, considering the fact that all the science has failed all of us, and we're trying to deal with this from a political perspective. So it's only to allow him to test that product in an aquatic environment.
Is that going to be in a...
He needs to be able to do that in order for us to move forward, and it's probably important that he be able to do that in conjunction with the workshops that we're talking about and with the other things that we're talking about, so he at least can say whether it performs in an aquatic environment similar to the way it's performed in a non-aquatic environment.
That would be in one designated area only?
Yes, he would designate the test area, and he could designate more than one test area, but not the whole lake, you know, and so forth. I'm not going to tie his hands. The thing is, we give him the power and he executes it, you know? And I don't think that we need to be trying to micromanage how he does his test. I think he can perform the test adequately with that. As far as I know, in the non-aquatic world, it was back here, and you had test plots set up that you did that in, and in the aquatic world, you do the same thing, you'll set up test plots. And I don't know where they are, I don't really care. It's up to him to decide where they go.
So, again, I can tell you that we looked at the site. Brian went out there yesterday and looked at the site where we did the test with the ECO Mike, WOW against the Roundup. It actually far surpassed Roundup in its control of the weeds. What I'd like to do is try it on different vegetation types, cattail, spatter dock, and water lilies and water hyacinths, to see what its effect is on that. And where I have a concentration of it in a small area, that's where I want to test it, and then photograph it if it will remain there without wind-driven circumstances, to see how it's going to control those invasives. I don't want to go out and spray an entire lake. I want to spray a plot so I can compare it to non-treated areas in the WOW. The only thing I want to treat it with is this WOW. It's, by the MSDS sheets, it has no known effects on water plants, I mean, water invertebrates and that, and in fact, it doesn't even require any PPE. So it's basically designated by EPA as a minimal risk. There's about 50 chemicals that are rated minimal risk, and that gets you an exemption from a lot of regulation. Florida only requires that you regulate it through a certification of the minimum risk, and they have all that certification as well. And you have the MSDS sheet sent, not that I provided to you tonight.
Okay. So with those minimal areas that are going to be chosen, we will, if they're in a public area, will notify the public that we're doing that testing?
We can. Again, this is...
You can sign it.
I would think that would be a wise thing to do.
Yeah, it puts signs up, test plot, don't walk, don't swim, don't drink, don't fish.
Mr. Mayor?
Don't eat the fish. I wouldn't eat it anyway, so it's okay.
So you got a motion and a second on the floor. Are we going to have any public input?
I will allow public input on it. I just wanted to make sure we got so much stuff through.
Well, I'd like to reserve my comments until I hear from the public.
All right, let's have public input. If you want from the public want to comment on this.
Good evening, Councilman. Council ladies. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. I thought we voted, we're going to talk about this in open forum, inviting all the public to get involved. How could you put something like this ahead of that? We've decided the city wasn't capable of doing a responsible job spraying...
Who decided that? Did you decide that, or did the city council decide?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not going to allow someone to come up in the public. Just back off. I'm not going to allow someone to come up in the public and say we're not capable. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Can I appeal the point of order? Can I appeal the point of order?
I haven't, yeah, go ahead. Say your point of order.
Well, first of all, the gentleman has a right to speak. First of all, please identify yourself for the record.
Bob Stevens, 150 Concha Drive, Sebastian.
He has five minutes to present what he feels without any interruption. Let's just hear him out, whether it's true or not. He has a right to speak.
Let's look at our meeting procedures, Councilmember Gilliam.
I'll retract it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, would you tell me if the meeting procedures allow someone from the public to defame or discredit the council or the city?
You should not defame anybody. Of course not, and as the chair of the meeting, you control that.
100%.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Stevens, I would ask that you do this, and I'm sorry I got upset with you, but I hear this too much. I would ask that you please limit your comments to the subject at hand.
There you go.
Don't comment about whether the city's capable, because this city is capable.
Would you do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, somehow the powers that be, we voted to have a public forum where the public get involved in how we spray, when we spray, and what we spray. In the past, that hasn't been readily available to the public. That's all we're asking. We want to be involved in it. We don't want to give a comp planch on you guys or anybody to start spraying chemicals right now. When it comes to the ball fields, I've looked at this, we can bait the hives of those red ants, like a shot glass full of the stuff that they eat, and then they go down and they just, they, there's cannibals, so they destroy their own nest. We don't need to spray 50 gallons of stuff all over these kids' fields. We can spot do that. So be worried about that, and I'm sure we can get volunteers to do that. But look, you know, we've been poisoning our canals for years, 20, I think, at least. Come tump to my house, Mr. Mayor, you'll see how devastating it is. That's all I'm saying. Why isn't this after the meetings? Enough said.
Thank you. I'm going to remind everybody else that comes up here, I am not going to tolerate anybody saying negative things like that about the city staff or about the city.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. I agree.
All right. Next person who wants to come up and talk, please.
Hello, I'm Diana Bolton, and I live in the Highlands on George Street. I have a degree in environmental marine science, and I think it's wonderful the way we're being cautious in our approach and that we're doing the test patches. I think it's a great idea to test also and be cautious in what we're doing on testing the aquatic portion of this. Just some points that I would like to make to make sure that we are, in fact, doing a good safety test, and I appreciate your concern and your caution in this. And that is that, provided that we take a healthy pond that has been unsprayed, and we do a survey of not just what we can see, but what's underneath the water, because what our concern is, it's about the aquatic life. Looking at the chemicals in the WOW, it looks fairly inert, it's mainly salt and detergent, but what we can see is only a small portion, and the reason all this has come up is what we can't see. So what we need to do is make sure we do a bentic survey and a fish survey. And I only have a bachelor's degree, but there's people with PhDs that we have at our disposal that are on the Natural Resources Board, and they were, had mentioned some very good points on this, and that is to do, make sure that we do have a survey, take an enclosed area pond, a small one, because if you spray a certain area of a pond, it's going to drift, so you really don't have a good handle on the effect it's having on the aquatic life. If we kill our aquatic life, we're killing our algae eaters, we're killing our plant eaters, and so what we want to do is make sure we have a good balance and that we don't kill the whole ecosystem, which is what we've been doing. So if we use an enclosed pond, which we do have plenty of, a small area, and also we make sure that we can define and distinguish between what's invasive, non-invasive, what's native and non-native, what your enemies are and what are not our enemies. And I think we need to take a more broad approach with what we consider to be our enemies in the way of plants, because our plants are really the only way we're going to clean the water. The plants and the shellfish. Our shellfish, we've already decimated. So we only have left a few little fish algae eaters, and we have our plants, and that's how we clean our water. That is the only way we will clean our water. We let nature do it, it's a lot cheaper, it's healthier for us, it's healthier for our fish, and we have a huge fishing community, we have a huge tourism industry and recreation industry that we want to protect. Does anyone have any questions about that?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and speak?
Hi, Andrea Ring, Quarry Lane. Yes, thank you. I agree with the lady who was just up here. I was wondering if you could tell me which area you do plan to do.
I don't think he knows that yet.
Have you decided?
If I may, so some of the areas, the Guard Street Park, I have a spatter dock population that's overtaking that, and I have, cattails are overtaking part of that. There's some areas next to Hardy Park where I've got some milfoil that's taking over that I'd like to try a small spot there, and then I've got, I haven't found the location for the, where I want to treat the water hyacinths and the water lily yet, but those areas I was looking at.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's all the people are asking. Please let them know what you're doing, so thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion? Any comments?
Yeah, can you refresh me on the motion, Mr. Mayor, please?
The motion is that we exempt the city from the spraying moratorium for the purposes of testing herbicide products. And I'm not, I'm not saying just well, I don't have any issue with putting well in the motion, but I said it that way because if tomorrow somebody walks in with another product that is marvelous like wow, I don't want to have him to have to come back to the council and have to be able to test that one. He's not, this is not about glyphosate, this is not about dicquat, this is not about any of those things. He's not testing any of that stuff. This is only about the product that would be like the wow product. This gentleman that I heard last night at the Natural Resources Board, if he walks, if he comes in and tells the city manager, "I got this product, do you want to test it?", I'd like for him to be able to test that.
Okay. I, I'm open-minded to it, Mr. Mayor. Diane had made some very good points. I'm not about to just open up the spigot and just go ahead and leave it up to staff to decide. I want to put some parameters, and I want to be very specific, and I want it to be monitored by another party, a scientist or somebody who can come back with a... I'm sure staff's going to have their report, but I would like to have somebody from the community that would also understand what we're trying to accomplish here. I understand that the, we need to do wherever we picked, and I know that Paul indicated Garden Park, which is, is that Easy Street?
No.
Where's Garden Park?
Garden Park's off of Roseland. Not Roseland, but Barber, Barber Street.
Oh, gotcha. Now I know where it is. Okay. And, Mr. Paul, how big of a piece over there at Garden Park are you talking about for an approx, a prox?
You know, I want to do a small section of the cattails. On the far east side of that pond is inundated completely with cattails. I don't want to...
Is that a quarter acre? Is that an eighth of an acre?
It may be a quarter acre, but I'm not, I don't want to spray a quarter acre. I want to spray maybe 20 or 30 feet of that cattail. I want to spray a section, maybe 50 by 50 of the spatter dock, because it's scattered out through there.
What was that last one, 30 to 50 feet?
Maybe 50 square feet, depending on...
50 square feet?
You know, a 50 by 50 section, so it'd be like 250 square feet, maybe.
Would you be supervising it, or would staff will be going out and do that?
So all of our staff is certified in applications, they've been through the IFIS in applications, they've all been...
So you will not be supervising this?
I'm not going to be directly supervising.
He supervises the staff.
Gotcha. Okay, correct. Just one, I want to understand how...
I may be out there and looking and seeing, but I'm not going to be out there for everything.
Gotcha. I respect that. Are there any fish over there in that, that you're aware of?
There's a, there's a variety of fish, both native and invasive. There's, there's large mouth bass, there's tilapia, there's minnows of various degrees.
Do you think that by doing this test over there, it's going to affect that?
So according to the label and the SDS, there's no known effects on aquatic life.
According to the label, and that's...
According to the SDS sheet approved by EPA.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And tell me about Hardy Park. You said you have a test area over there?
Well, this one's going to be a little bit of a challenge. That vegetation, it's not algae that's growing on top of the water. It need, I'd like to do a test spot, but depending on wind driven, I may have to change the location of wherever that stuff moves to, depending on how quick this stuff reacts. But again, it'd be like a 50 by 50 area, and we can try to monitor that. But that's a floating vegetation, it's going to be a little bit more of a challenge to monitor.
Well, that was going to bring me to my next point. Ordinances does not allow us to spray when it's windy, correct?
Our ordinance doesn't control that. The label controls it, and the environment controls it. But once you spray it, that material, that plant could break up, and it'd be hard to determine what was killed by natural dioph and what was killed by the spray if it gets broken up and moved around. That was my only concern.
Okay. And the specimens that you're going after, that's the lilies?
So I'm looking at all of the invasive ones, the milfoil, the spatter dock, the cattail, water lily, water hyacinth. Those are our fast-growing invasive species on the water.
Okay.
It won't affect algae, it doesn't do submerged vegetation.
How much time do you need to conduct your experiment?
It's going to depend on how it reacts. So with, with the terrestrial on the above ground, we started seeing results in seven to 10 days, and then it progressed from there. So it's going to depend on how it reacts, whether we'd need a second application or not. I'd like to see what a single application would do, and if I have to do a second application, I would like to be able to do that. But our whole goal is to provide a tool in the toolbox. You know, all we heard was glyphosate, 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 find an alternative. You find an alternative, well, we don't want you to spray that either. We're going to, our hands are going to be tied, and we're going to be in a position where we're not going to be able to do anything. We hate any, and you'll, we have to have an integrated system, and this is as innocuous as they get.
Mr. Mayor, I tell you my concern, we have two workshops coming up, the 15th and the 23rd as well, and that's the purpose of having these workshops. And I understand Paul wants to try to stay ahead of this and trying to figure out a compromise with the environmentalists of our community and getting the job done where it's not concerning our permits with St. John's. You know, when we did those canals, we have an obligation to maintain them, I understand that. But we also have an obligation not to poison our waterways either. So I'm trying to find a happy medium where we can keep everybody happy. So I think that your motion is too broad. I'm interested in making an amendment, if you allow me to, so that we can have, maybe we can hear from the environmental chair, he's sitting out in the audience.
Okay, I just want to make sure before we go any further, is that we do not have the authority, this council does not have the authority to direct the city manager on how he performs the task we give him. I think I talked about that at 5:15 today.
I think with three votes...
So we cannot, we cannot micromanage the manager.
I'm not looking to micromanage, I'm trying to set some confines, areas that this doesn't get out of hand. And if we have three votes up here, we can direct the city manager to do this testing under these circumstances and within these confines. You need three votes to direct a charter officer.
You can direct the city manager to test, you can't tell the city manager, "I want you to test, and oh, by the way, I want this person, this person, this person to evaluate".
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to find a happy medium and a compromise. I would like to recognize our chairman of the Natural Resources Board.
The Natural Resources Board is not involved in this, they have not been asked to be involved in this.
I will ask for a point of order, then.
Then you can ask for a point of order, but I'm going to tell you right now, and I'll tell the chairman of the Natural Resources Board when he comes up, they have not been charged with this, they have not been asked to be involved with this.
I appeal to the council?
And I'm going to, I'm going to go right back right now, I may as well just bring it up as part of this conversation. You did a major disservice to the Natural Resources Board last night.
Now you're getting off the subject, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm not. I'm telling you, you did a major disservice to them last night.
Let's stay focused on what's on hand here.
They're not involved in this. You guys are not involved in this.
I am appealing, I am appealing your decision. So we have, can you call the vote, please?
Go ahead and appeal your decision. What's your, what's your...
I would like to hear from the chairman of the Natural Resources Board.
Okay, and I'm denying that, so you're appealing that, let's have a vote. Would you call a roll, please?
Well, wait a minute. Excuse me, excuse me. There's a motion. Mr. Attorney, do we need a second on that motion?
There isn't a motion. You made a point of order and I deny it, you can ask for a appeal.
Can the attorney weigh in, please?
Well, you, you made a point of order, and that's what, that's what's being worked out right now.
And I have a right to appeal it to the other council members, correct? For a vote?
You do, without, you don't need a second.
I understand that.
You don't need a second.
All right, so I'd like to call for a vote.
Yeah, you don't need a second. But you do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilliam?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
No.
And Vice Mayor Motti?
Yes.
Okay. Would you come forward? And I want to tell you when you come forward, I want to admonish you that the Natural Resources Board has not been asked to be involved in this.
Yes, sir.
And that you have to, you, you, as an advisory board to the city council, are under the direction of the city council for the advice that you are solicited, and you've not, you've not been asked as an official board to be involved in this matter.
I, I, Mr., excuse me, point of order. Mr. Attorney, does he have a right to direct? I mean, we just had a vote here asking for a testimonial of one of our volunteers that serves our community, and that, does the mayor have a right to direct him like that?
Well, I didn't hear any direction. I think he admonished him of what, what the role of the National, Natural Resource Board is, but I don't think he gave his speech...
I have a great amount of respect for this man, and I have a great amount of respect for the Natural Resources Board. I'm not trying to give him a hard time. I just want to make sure that there's a clear line here.
I just didn't hear any limitation in his speech. I think the speaker can say whatever he wants.
Proceed.
Strictly related to this, what you're talking about, I am not representing the board at this moment strictly for what we're looking at. I would recommend passing the, passing, consider lifting the moratorium on herbicide spraying strictly to allow the testing of the herbicide, mostly in relation to our sustainable development goals require baseline information. I need to know certain things, and I need it to be presented in a certain manner that Mr. Carlisle is doing a very good job of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That was very important information, because if I intend to make an amendment to your motion, and you may not get a second on it, I'm trying to get this thing through for you.
State your amendment, please.
I still love you.
I know, I know, Damian. I know.
So, so the amendment would be to allow the city manager to proceed with doing his testing on the, lifting the moratorium specifically at Garden Park, and keeping it between, I requested 20 to 30 feet, I'm willing to push it up to 20 to 50 feet to give you enough room to do your testing, subject to having somebody from the environmental community, somebody that can be there at the date and time to observe. That would be part of my amendment. And also to include Hardy Park, and the city manager requested 50 by 50 feet. I'm okay with that. Subject to making sure that one of our environmentalists from the community, and there's a few of them out here, will observe when they do it, and they establish that baseline, and they identify those plants, and the species, the invasive and non-invasive. There should be a, I don't know how you're going to do a plant and fish survey, but we need data. And so if you can include that in the amendment, I, I'll be happy to go along with the lifting of the moratorium.
Did you get that amendment?
Yeah, I think she can get it.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, now, I'm, okay, in conversation about the amendment, I'm just going to say that that amendment makes the basic assumption that we're now limiting the city manager in how he can perform this task, and we're forcing him to come back to us if he finds that he needs one more plot that he deals with. And I believe that it's just one more example of us assuming that our city staff just doesn't know how to do their job. And so given that, given that, that's my statement on the amendment. That's why I will not vote, I will not vote for the amendment. Any other comments?
Well, maybe, I'm sorry, go ahead, Charles. I apologize.
I would say if the, if the town manager needs additional space, he should be allowed to have that.
How? Under this amendment, he has three places and a specific amount of square feet that he can do.
He can make another request. He can, if he needs more space, let's hear it now.
Why do we need, why do we need to talk about this so many times? I don't understand. I, I guess I'd get totally confused. I, I have never seen, been around this city for a long time, and I know contrary to how some people believe in the, in the, in the audience as well as in the city population, I've never seen the city staff do their job incorrectly as I'm being, it sounds like people are saying they do their job. I trust that man to perform this test adequately. If there's anybody in the audience or anybody in the city that would like to lend their assistance, contact him. If you know how to do a fish survey, contact him. He's not going to stop you from doing a fish survey. He, he will take that help. So all I'm saying is that, that I have never seen that, and I, I always object to the tightening on the staff that makes it appear as though they're just not capable of doing their job. So that's why I will vote against the amendment.
Well, here's the thing, Mr. Mayor. You have to have feelings and understandings of other people on the other side of the pond, okay? And you want to be considerate of them. Now, I'm not looking to tie the city manager's hands. I'm giving him, if there's additional room that he needs, please state so right now so we can include it in the amendment. If there's not, and he's comfortable with those parameters, then let's proceed, and let's get the...
All right, I'm just going to tell you, he's going to move, he's going to move forward whatever parameters we give him, as, as, no matter how ludicrous they are, he's going to move forward with those parameters. So he's not going to tell you right now that he doesn't like your amendment, he's going to move forward with it.
Who's he?
That's his job, the city manager.
Well, excuse me, I think he should let him speak for himself.
So the only area that you didn't cover, there's a couple areas you didn't cover. One is the, I don't have a location known for the water hyacinth and the water lily, so I don't have a location today for that. If you want a fish survey done, I will have to put out an RFQ.
No, we don't need that.
If I need the fish survey and that, I will have to put out an RFQ for that. I can't, I, I need to, I need to go through the professional services agreements to try to find those professionals to do those services, which I will have to do an RFQ for, request for qualifications for that survey.
Can I ask how timely that is? I know that Dr. DeFreeza and Abby from St. John took both volunteers...
That's, that's law, he has to do that.
Okay, but it shouldn't be timely, and I think that...
Well, the RFQ process will take 60 days.
60 to 90 days, because you have to advertise, you have to interview, you have to score, it has to go through several scoring iterations.
So you said water highs specifically. Can you give us examples of one or two, three places?
So there's, in the El Cam Canal, there's some. I don't have an exact location of where they are. I've got to find a concentration of them where I...
How big of an area, if you find it over there at the El Cam Waterway, how big of an area do you need?
So I want to just do an area, again, of any of these, about a 50 by 50 area. I don't want to spray acres and acres of this stuff.
Give me a second place with high, give me a second area for water highs that you need to do that. So you got, we identified the El Cam.
Can I, can I interrupt you for a second?
No, I just want to, I want to hear from the city manager.
Well, I just, why don't we do this? This is, this is, if you'll, I just had a, you know, sometimes I actually think of things. How about if what we do is we provide him the, the moratorium exemption pending him providing the council with a map that outlines the test plots?
That's what we're doing.
No, I'm talking about without coming it up tonight, give him an opportunity to actually do it.
I'm not going to tie his hands, I promise you. I want him to walk out of here able to do the job.
You have tied his hands the minute we approve your amendment.
But I have to be considerate of the environmentalist people in this community. So I'm trying to find a happy median. So if you can let me just proceed, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll give you the floor.
I heard two environmentalists come up here, and both of them said that they liked the idea he was doing.
Mr. Carlisle, would you please tell me a second location for the high water line?
I don't have a location for the water high, for the hyacinth. The lettuce, there's lettuce and hyacinth in the El Cam Canal, on the Concha Canal. I don't know where there's, I haven't been in a boat to find the locations to do that. Councilmember Paris sent me an email and said, "I want this on the agenda."
Okay, so you don't have a second place picked out yet?
I do not.
How about if we put in the amendment your choice of a second place to be determined at your discretion? Would that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. As long as we keep it within a 50/50. Would everybody work with that? We okay with that?
Are you saying sure?
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead and, and, and include in the amendment...
All right, would you please state, would you please state your amendment again, please?
So I want to add in the amendment that Mr. Carlisle's got permission to proceed with the 50/50 area over by the El Cam Waterway, over by Concha, a 50/50 location. Jeanette, you have that?
Thank you.
And the city manager also, at his discretion, if he can find another high water area and keep it within a 50/50, and just notify whoever, maybe we can get one of the environmentalists to contact Paul, and when, and they properly notice that person 24 hours or 48 hours when to contact Paul, and they properly notice that person 24 hours or 48 hours when they're going to do it, so that that person has enough time to meet, meet with his people. Paul, I'm trying to figure out a way to keep everybody happy. Well, whoever is certified, you got people that are certified to spray.
I have people that are certified to spray, but I'm not sure who this environmentalist is. I mean, I've got to vet the, I mean, do you, do you want me to just choose somebody that's here, or do you want me to do the proper thing and get in, do the RFQ for an environmentalist?
You have to do it the proper way.
Unfortunately, because this is time sensitive. As I had a conversation with the attorney, weeds grow, ants come, you know, we've been trying to get a solution here. I think, you know, we all agree that you want a substitute, and I want to see a solution.
The simple solution is just a directive to do the test.
Well, that's the problem.
Okay, is that, is your amendment, have you finished?
I'm just about done with my amendment. If I can get somebody to second it, I think he will be on course, and we can get this done.
Do we have a second on your amendment?
Vice Mayor Marty, he seconded it, but I, Councilmember Gilliam's added...
He restated it.
Yeah, he added a...
So, we have to have a second on the restatement of the amendment?
Yes.
Can I hear the restatement, please?
Well, the restatement is...
To proceed with the Garden Park, 20 to 30 feet, am I correct? Am I on the right track here?
Well, you said 50 to 50 feet, and it's, it...
At Hardy Park, that's Hardy Park, 50 by 50. Gardens, Garden Park is 50, 30, he said he needs 20 to 50 feet, and the Concha, the El Cam Waterway, and then one other location to be determined by the city manager.
All right, that's the amendment. Would someone like to second it?
Can I clarify? Because in Garden Park, I needed two spots, one for the, for the spatter dock and one for the maiden, for the...
Let the amendment reflect that. Okay, Jeanette?
For the cattail.
All right, now we have an amendment. Do we have a second?
Two spots at Garden.
I'll second it.
All right, call a roll, please, on the amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Paris?
Here.
No.
Yes or no?
She said yes.
Okay. Mayor Dodd?
No.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Aye.
It's your choice.
He said aye.
You said aye?
And Damian says aye.
Okay, the amendment passes. Do you have that? Main motion, to exempt the spraying, the city manager from spraying for the purpose of testing herbicides. Let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliam's?
Aye.
Councilmember Paris?
Aye.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go on to item number 13B. All right, Councilmember Gilliam's found some, an error, one error in the tally sheets from our attorney selection.
Correction, not one error, many errors, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm presenting this right now. If you'd like, let me do that, please. And so, as a result of the, the item that he found, we actually have a change in the number four, which is par Google Hama, I'm saying that wrong, which is the Weiss-Sorota-Herman Cole and Berman Firm. So, the four applicants that we would be bringing for testing under that are Mary Annan, David Miggit, Gary Ogeldorf, and the firm, the Weiss-Sorona-Herman Firm. So, that's where we stand on that, with that modification.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we proceed with a clean ballot, a new vote, and then we put it out to the public, transparency, right here, so everybody in the community knows what each one of us and who we voted for.
You placed a motion on the floor by Mr. Gilliam that we do a revote. Do we have a second on that motion?
May I second it?
All right, let's have a roll call on that, please.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
No.
Vice Mayor Marty?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gilliam's?
Yes.
After that letter you wrote, you said yes?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, point of order. Excuse me. No, no, point of order, don't be ridiculing him. He gave his vote.
After that letter you wrote...
He has a right to change his mind.
Say it to the microphone, please.
I wrote a letter against what Mr. Gilliam did.
Microphone's not on.
I will on this, get an attorney on board, end of story.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that after the letter that you wrote, that you voted yes on this. Okay, we will have the, I'm going to ask the city attorney to bring this, this voting process forward with a legal approval process at our next meeting, and we will do the vote at our next meeting.
No, 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 no.
Yes, we will.
We had a vote that we would do this tonight.
We're not doing this tonight. There's a council member missing, and we're not going to vote tonight.
No, you haven't, excuse me, point of order.
If I have to adjourn this meeting, I will.
Point of order.
Mr. Attorney.
Point of order. Can I, do you want to allow the three of us to vote?
I'm going to rule against you, so call for the vote.
You cannot, you, you want to get an opinion from the attorney?
I'm going to get an opinion from the attorney.
Okay, Mr. Attorney.
All right, can we not do this when the fourth, fifth council member is present?
Actually, it's not a matter of who's present, it's a matter of it's not the way it was put on the agenda. This was put on the agenda strictly to either confirm or not confirm the, the prior ranking. If the vote was to not confirm it, then it needs to move on to a new agenda item.
It needs to come on, and we're going to bring it forward at the next meeting.
Excuse me, I requested, I had a letter for a redo, and that's what I requested to put on this agenda. Now, I made that very clear. Now, if I need to amend my motion right now, then so be it, but there was, excuse me.
If I have to adjourn this meeting, I will do that. We're not going to take a vote until all five council members are here. It is not fair to the fifth council member for us to do that.
Do, Mr. City Attorney, can we proceed without the fifth member? Is there something in the Florida statutes that does not allow us to proceed? And if there is, please tell me the statute.
No, there's, it's not a matter of not having the member, because there's a quorum here. You can transact business with a quorum.
Thank you.
What you can't do is transact business that's not on the agenda, and that's not what the agenda item is.
Well, I sent the letter.
The item was strictly to confirm it, the vote was to not confirm it, so that pretty much then puts the item back to a, to a new item that will need to come back on an agenda.
Correct.
Well, I just got the agenda, and in my letter to the city manager was to put this on the agenda for a redo. Can I get clarification, Mr. City Manager?
So, again, I got a couple letters, and you're, you requested a redo. I put on there for a clarification of the vote, because that's what you raised in your question.
Okay. So, why don't we do this, Mr. Mayor? Let's bring the projector down, and let's do the clarification, and let's show everybody in the community exactly what transpired that night. I'm prepared, I have my paperwork. Can you bring up the projector, sir?
Sit down.
Can I get a point of order?
No, you may not get a point of order. Would you please sit down?
Okay.
That's, that's a disrespectful move on the part of a, of a member of an elected body to stand up like that.
I apologize, but I would like to present the tally and the transfer of the tally.
I'm beginning to lose my patience. Sorry, I won't do it. I told you I wouldn't.
Okay. So, can we go ahead and proceed with the projector, sir?
No, we're not going to bring this forward. The item on the agenda was to do what you just did, you've confirmed that, we're going to bring it forward at the next meeting as an agenda item.
I, there's a motion...
You're not going to sneak this through without the other council member being here, Damian.
It's not, listen, it's not my problem.
You had every opportunity this last week to discuss this, this agenda item with the city manager to modify it. You chose not to do that. The agenda item is very straightforward.
Tell me when you're done.
I'm, I'm moving on to item number 15A.
I'd like to speak. Point, no, I'd like to speak.
You can speak.
So, at the last meeting, everybody up here got a ballot, and they were requesting to put their top three out of the eight attorneys that submitted applications, they were asked to put their top three. When I reviewed the ballot, first of all, when I asked the mayor for verification on the vote, he looked at me like I was crazy, and he gave, and he did, he went through it, then he gave it to the clerk, and the clerk looked at it, and she did not understand it. Then she gave it to the city manager, and I looked at the tally sheet that's in this packet, and I see how the numbers were added, and the numbers were transcribed in the wrong boxes. So, when you did the count, you had the wrong totals. The whole thing is a mess. That's number one. And I'm prepared to bring the screen down and go point by point on every ballot to show you exactly what happened and what transpired. Excuse me, let me finish, and I'll let you have the floor. The second thing is you cannot have a secret ballot. It's a violation of the sunshine law. It must be out to the public, it must be full transparent, and everybody in this community has a right to know who we're going to shortlist for a charter officer that is a very important officer. Now, it's not my problem that Mr. Hill went on vacation, or he has a business, because he's done this over the years, he's been in office, he's been out many times. Why should we hold up the business of this community when we have litigation pending, we have issues to deal with, we need to start interviewing for attorneys, and if there's three of us up here, which is a majority, why are you holding up, Mr. Mayor, holding us up from proceeding with a clean vote? Jim's votes may be considered from the last time, there might not be much of a change, but I'm asking this council to redo it correctly, transfer, transfer it out to the public, and read the votes, so everybody knows what's going on here. That's all I'm asking for.
Would you please, no applause.
That's all I'm asking for, and I can show you where all the mistakes are. And if Jim, Jim's got his numbers here, we can include them.
You've, you've already done that, you've already proposed that we do the revote, that's already been passed, we're going to do the revote. I'm asking the city attorney, based on this agenda item, to bring that back with an acceptable method that beats the sunshine law, that meets all the breakdowns, at our next meeting for the revote. We will start with the same candidates. If anybody else has sent an application in, there might be an additional candidate. We'll start with the same candidates.
No, I'm not opening it up for new candidates, and I requested the city manager to put this on the agenda and to prioritize it in my letter for a redo, and that's how I understood this was going down tonight. Now, now we have to put it off for another two weeks, and then start, it's wrong, there's a communication with one of the charter officers here, and I am not happy. And I suggest that my intent was to put this on the agenda immediately and correct the problems. And you by putting it off, so you can get another vote, because your buddy's out of town, wherever he may be, is not fair to this community.
Mr. Gilliam, we have a rule in this about that personal attack stuff.
I'm not attacking anybody.
Yeah?
I'm just calling it the way I see it.
You told me you loved me a little while ago.
I do love you.
Show some love.
I do love you.
Okay.
But we need to take care of business, and the city manager knows what my intent was. Correct, Mr. Carlisle? Redo, you want to read my letter, do you want me to read it?
You had several points of clarification in there, that you wanted, you wanted a redo vote, you wanted to clarify the...
Why isn't that on the agenda?
I wrote it the way I thought the intent was, was to determine whether the event, whether the vote was valid.
Okay, so then let's go ahead and present to see if the vote was valid, and then we'll go ahead and discuss my intent.
You've already voted on that.
We've already done that, we've already decided it wasn't valid.
You voted that it wasn't valid.
No, I did not. The vote was not valid.
You paced the motion and passed, we've agreed to that.
No, I did not.
That motion passed.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
When?
Your motion was that we do the revote because the vote wasn't valid, that passed, that's been determined.
The vote, the ballot was not valid.
That's been determined, that that's not, that it wasn't valid, we're going to do the revote.
And now, let's proceed with the other part of the request.
And if we're going to read your letter...
No, and we're going to read, we're going to, we're going to proceed with the other part of the request to redo the vote.
Okay, if we're going to read your letter, then I'm going to read Mr. Malte's letter.
I need to move for a five-minute recess.
I second it.
We're in recess for five minutes.
That the errors were there, and that they were, and it's been determined that we're going to revote. And so, based on that agenda item, we're going to do the revote at the next meeting.
I'm asking for a point of order. Can I get a vote here? Because you can't just move forward. You said you were going to read the letter. Miss, I read his letter while we took the break. Excuse me, let me finish talking. We read the letter, and his letter also asked for a redo. So you had two council members who sent two letters in asking for a redo.
And I read the letters, and I was prepared for a recount tonight, so I'm a little confused, myself.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're not being fair with us. You're trying to strong-arm us, and the community sees what you're doing. So, if you want me to present and show you the errors, let's proceed properly. We were in violation, big time, when we did the vote last time. Let's clean it up. Because this council member is not here, let's the cards fall where they're going to fall. I have no problem including Jim's votes from last time. Let's clean it up, and let's move forward, and not delay this. Now, if I have to call a vote for three people and appeal it, then we do that, and we're going to proceed.
My ruling is we're moving to 15A.
Mr. Attorney, I'm appealing that. Do I need to call for a vote? I'm appealing that.
Well, I understand, but as far as, you know...
Rule on what I'm asking you.
Pursuant to our charter, the mayor chairs the meeting now. And part of chairing the meeting is determining the order of business.
And according to the charter, we have a right to call point of order, and three of us can override him. Correct? That's according to the charter.
That's not in the charter, that's in...
Robert's Rules of Order. Okay, so I'm now calling for an appeal, and I'm asking for the vote. Now, you want to deny us our vote? Mr. Attorney?
I'm not going to deny your vote.
Okay, let's proceed, Mr. Mayor. I'm proceeding, I'm asking...
I've established the order. Is that, is that, is that challengeable?
I mean, I would have to review the charter again, because charters are all very unique. But this charter, and the consistency with most charters, is that the chair, and all collegial boards, the chair controls the meeting.
Yes.
So...
And we have a right under Robert's Rules of Order...
When an item moves on, whether, when discussion is cut off, when public input is cut off, when items advance, is always within the sole discretion...
And under Robert's Rules of Order, we can appeal it. And I'm, and we're going to appeal it right now. Now, if you're going to deny me the right to appeal this, Mr. Attorney, tell me this right now.
This, this is something that pursuant to our charter falls within the sole discretion of the mayor as the chair of...
So you're denying me my right to appeal it? To the council?
I have no authority to deny you anything.
Well, I'm asking you to give us a legal opinion. I'm asking you...
And I gave, and I gave you my opinion, sir.
And what is it?
And I gave you my opinion, and that is that...
So we either proceed, or we don't proceed?
When an item is concluded, or moved on, or when discussion is terminated, falls with the mayor.
He said we were going to read the letter into the record. I want him to read the letter, so everybody in the community knows that Mr. Matty also requested a redo. I offered to do a redo, and I have not had a chance to present the mistakes that were made, which is part of what's on the agenda, and we've not had a proper right to vote.
Mr. Gilliams, first of all, the mistakes, just, I mean, the mistakes, that, you've already invalidated the last...
He left out, the city manager left out the part to redo. It's in his letter, and it's in my letter.
But, but, but that's, that's the, that's the point, is that...
Well, then, I want to tell you, somebody's going to hang for this. And I'm going to tell you that right now. I'm dead serious, because I personally requested, I personally requested that be on the agenda. And so did this gentleman here.
All right. Ms. Gilliams, we are now moving on to item 15A. We will take the revote, and I've asked the city attorney to come up with an approach to do that. I know you may not be here, but...
I'm...
I'm, I'm sorry, but don't, no outbursts, please. Okay. So we're proceeding item 15A.
So you're denying us our vote?
I'm proceeding to item 15A. I'm not denying you anything. I'm not saying there's no vote. The chart, the amendment, the, the, the item, as it was presented on the agenda, has been satisfied. We are having the revote. We're having a revote at our next meeting. So we've satisfied the item that's on the agenda. So we're going to move on to item 15A.
Well, we're not satisfied. You're satisfied.
You may not be satisfied, but I am, and I'm moving on to item 15A. As the chair...
Yeah, I don't think you have, I don't think you have...
If you would like in November to become the mayor, you can do that, and then you can chair the meetings, and you can decide how the meetings are run.
Mr. Mayor, you're an equal, just like all of us. You run the meetings, but you're not acting like an equal.
Between, between the gavels. And I have the opportunity to do that, and I am moving forward.
Okay. So you're going to deny three council members their due, their due process, correct?
No, they're going to get their due process at the next meeting. We're going to do the revote.
At the convenience of your, your friend on the end there, right?
No, not at the convenience, my friend.
You're going to put off the legalities of this city another two weeks.
Mr. Mayor, yes, would you please?
Can I, can I interject? Can I write, can I read my background? At December 11th, City Council ranked the applicants for the city attorney position. It has been requested the applicants be reconsidered and a new vote taken. And that's what it says in my agenda summary. That was my, that was what my agenda summary request was. In reviewing the minutes, the documents, there was an error. So I did specifically ask what you all asked me to do, was put in the agenda that they consider a new vote be taken. I didn't say when. So I don't understand where...
Well, it's, it's, it was determined to be at the next meeting.
I did not determine that. I said, I put in here what you asked to be put in. I don't want someone to say I didn't follow your directions.
It has been requested that the applicants be reconsidered and new vote taken. In reviewing the minutes and the documents, that was an error in the ranking of the fourth-ranked individual firm. So that the firm could have been ranked fourth in the name of the firm. Council can't decide if they wish to proceed with the top three, which we decided not to. And they are an unchanged, or, or place Mr. Weiss and his firm as number four to begin the interviews. Council can ask that the revote take place with all council members in attendance. But let me ask you this, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to appease two other members here. I'm not sure how the, after looking at their ballots, I see Charles had, and me had, for one firm. She missed a box. So let me ask you this. Maybe we can resolve this for everybody, and we don't have to put this off. So what you're saying is you want to add Weiss on, and then we interview all four?
Yes. That's exactly what I said when I started this whole stupid conversation.
Okay, and then they're all considered equals?
They're all considered equal.
Okay, I'll go along with that.
That's exactly what I said when I started this conversation.
All right, then go ahead, let's go ahead and make a motion.
That's what I said before you went on the tirade.
Yeah, but I, but it was understood that they will only be considered, the fourth be considered, only if the third, second, or first didn't show up. That's how I understood...
All right, Damian, Mr. Councilmember Gilliams, I got to quit calling you, Damian. That's disrespectful, I'm sorry. Councilmember Gilliams, you made the motion that we approve the consent agenda. One of the items in the consent agenda was our minutes from the last meeting. And in our minutes in the last meeting, it says we will interview the top four candidates. That's what it said in those minutes. I don't know if in your preparation you read this stuff or not, but it said that in those minutes, that we interview the top four candidates. What I said when I started this conversation was that we would...
Those are not verbatim, by the way. They're not verbatim, they're not verbatim. So they're just minutes. Okay, so don't mislead everybody.
But they're the official record of the meeting.
Can we move, can we move forward? I'm willing to go along with that. If you put the fourth person on, and the other two council people are willing to go along with that, then we can appease everybody.
You have to reopen the item, Mayor.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we...
No, no, we can't, we can't. You have to, someone who voted in the affirmative on the last motion has to recall it.
It's, because it's already been closed out, so you have to bring it...
So it's already been closed out, so somebody who voted in, somebody who voted in the affirmative on the last motion has to recall.
I will recall.
You, you vote to recall that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. We're going to recall the last motion. Would you call the roll, please? The last motion was that we take the revote.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hold on a minute. A yes means we do the revote, a no means we don't. So it would be a no to, to, so my, my, my vote is no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Matty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
No, no, he means no, we want to redo it.
I don't know what he means.
Yeah.
I want to do it.
Yeah, he wants to redo it, so it's a no vote.
I mean, you want to, you want to not redo it?
I want to, I want to have a vote on this.
You want to, he, he voted the way he wanted to vote.
He wants to add the fourth person on.
No, he wants to revote it. That's what he just said.
I think he's confused.
No, he's not. He's, I just asked him. He said he wants to revote.
Charles, would they...
No, you can't, you can't. He, he voted yes, which means he wants to revote it.
Well, you just, you did, you...
I just want to revote.
Hmm? He wants to revote, so he voted yes. On that, on the motion. We've recalled the motion that we do a revote. I voted no, not to do a revote. He's voted yes to do a revote. Roll call, continue the roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
So you want to do the revote.
Yeah, I want to get the fourth person on.
Then, if you say yes to this motion, we are going to do a revote at our next meeting.
No, then it's a no.
Okay, so he's voting no.
No.
Councilwoman Ferris?
No.
Okay, now.
Charles, you mean a no?
No, here's what I said, here's what I said at the beginning of this conversation.
It's very confusing, Mr. Mayor. Just help the guy out. He's trying, you're trying to get the fourth person on, so we can move forward?
He, he voted the way he wanted to vote.
Would you stop, let him speak?
He did.
You want to try, you want to get the...
I want, I want to revote on what we have.
He's not going to allow that tonight.
It doesn't matter, we don't have to. This mo, the motion to revote failed.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
When Mr. Gilliams and, and Ms. Ferris moved for reconsideration, it was to bring this item back to the table.
Which was the motion?
Which was the motion. The idea was to just bring it back to an open item, so you could then entertain a new motion, which I believe Mr. Gilliams wants to be, for these four.
Okay, all right. If you withdraw your second...
I withdraw the second. She withdraws her motion, I withdraw the second.
You withdraw the second, you withdraw the motion, motion gone. All right, now, the way I started this conversation off, before we got to all this stuff, was that we would interview Manny Aaron, David Migott, Gary Oldendorf, and the name is Paul something or another, which is the firm of Weiss, Sirona, Healthman, and so forth.
That was your motion?
That was my, I didn't motion, I just said it's what we're going to do, based on what you said.
Okay, I'm okay with that. So you need, do you need a consensus?
I don't need a consensus, I think we're fine.
Okay, so then we'll proceed in that matter, and we'll leave it the way it is. Charles, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Problem solved.
I'm okay, you're okay.
Okay.
Do you have a, all right.
I just don't want to lose time. Time is of the essence.
Madam City Clerk, those four names that I just gave you, did you get those?
No, could you repeat those?
Okay, Manny Aaron, David Migott, M-I-G-U-T, Gary Oldendorf, Oldendorf, and then it's, it's in the, in the list, it's under Paul Gugama, which is actually the Weiss firm.
Weiss firm.
Right, Mr. Gugama.
Okay, if you will set up those interviews as quickly as you can between now and the next meeting, so we can select the attorney replacement at our next meeting, that would be, that would be very, would be very helpful.
Okay.
So you have to come up with a time and a date that people can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Now, we're going to interview those people in one day. We'll have, well, each four, the five people will be in different offices that the candidates rotate. We've got more business.
I, I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving forward to item 15A. Would the city manager like to approve this?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Public input is 14. Did you want to do 14?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to do 14, or you want to put...
Mr. Hocker, I'm sorry, I almost did it again. They, they, our prestigious ex-Vice Mayor, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I almost did it again. I'm kind of confused right now after the last 20 minutes. So, public input, who would like to have public input?
You're about to do it.
Uh, let's, let's let Charles come up first.
Hi, Council. My name's Charles Stedelman, I'm with the Natural Resource Board. Just wanted to say Happy New Year to everybody. The Natural Resource Board appreciates your ongoing support of the Sustainable Sebastian Initiative. I'd just like to bring you up to date on what's going on with that. At our last meeting, we talked about the launch date of being on Earth Day, that we're really going to push for the launch of Sustainable Sebastian. Between now and then, we're going to have multiple workshops defining sustainable Sebastian and what we're doing. The first discussion on what we're looking at is Initiative One, which is support overall reduction in the use of single-use plastics by the City of Sebastian and its business communities by assisting and promoting Keep Indian River Beautiful, Keep Rivard Beautiful's litter-quitter program, and Surf Riders' ocean-friendly restaurants program. The initiative number two is support landscaping practices that promote a healthy and native ecosystem by assisting and promoting Keep Indian River Beautiful lagoon-friendly lawns, and University of Florida's IFAS Florida Friendly Landscape Programs. Those are just two of the initiatives that we're working on this month. There are six initiatives altogether, but the single-use plastics is, is really what we're focusing on right now. Our goal is not only to say, hey, look, we got a single-use plastic problem, everybody does that, but we've directed the board to come up with objectives on reaching these goals, and then logistical plans on implementing those objectives. We're not just going to complain about the problems anymore. We're going to bring forth real solutions to these. Single-use plastics is going to be really huge. And supporting the landscaping practices that promote a healthy native ecosystem. We all, all just talking about all that with this brand and native plants and everything. The other thing we're also working on is the new comp plan. We've been invited to work, and we appreciate the invitation, for the first time at board level, is going to be putting in real input on the different parts of the comp plan. We intend to stay within our lanes. We intend to work with the council on the parts that you want us to work on. And we've also have been invited to get in on the other board members to participate as citizens of Sebastian, not just in our own lane. So we're going to, we look forward to further participation. We intend on meeting our deadlines for the next couple of months. Our final deadline is 6/11. We'll have a final plan for implementation of Sustainable Sebastian that will include all six initiatives, objectives on how to reach them, as well as logistical planning and such. But we would like to thank you for approving the Sustainable Sebastian Initiative, and we look forward to your further support. And if there's anything that the Natural Resource Board can give our support on to the city council, that is what we're here for, to help push this council's agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Carlyle, just one thing. Last night, in watching that meeting, they're working on some collateral material for Earth Day, trying to put, to put out like possibly a reusable bag. Their budget really isn't sufficient enough to do that. I would suggest maybe that they approach you. You, you, within your authority, could probably provide them some money to help in purchasing those, those, that collateral material that they need. Is that acceptable to you to do that?
Just need to see what it is and how we can fund it.
Yeah, well, they're going to do it through Kim, through the, through your staff to do that, but they only have like $700 left in their budget for Earth Day, and, and they need to do a band and some stuff. And the collateral material to start the kickoff for Sustainable Sebastian is going to cost them more than that $700. And it's, it's not something I don't think they need to come back to council for. I think it certainly can be done within your spending authority, so...
Yeah, we just need to know what it is, and we also, we need to make sure we follow our purchasing procedures and that, and, and a budget amendment can be done if we need to do so.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Okay. Anyone else want to come up?
Hi, good evening. My name's Tracy Cole, and I live on Thomas Street here in Sebastian. I have a couple of things I wanted to ask about. First of all, about the gentleman, Mr. Badea, that was allowed back on the Natural Resources Board with no public input, and no time for us to view. I think that allowing someone that would do that to a police officer of ours should be held accountable for that, and that it shows no integrity at all when we allow people to serve on boards for Sebastian that feel like they can do things with no consequences. So I would like to have it put on there, that the public can have an input, and that his position should be left up to more people. The police officer didn't even get to talk. You, you guys gave one guy, oh, let him have his time to talk, but yet the police officer that was involved in that was not even allowed to speak. And that's, that's not right. And then I, you know, Mr. Gilliam, a thing came up about your property taxes. And so I called the county and asked them what, why are...
Well, you got to please direct your comments to me.
Why those practices of waiting to pay your taxes until they go up for bid? Is that a business move, or is that a financial move? Because if it is a business move on any of the council's agenda, it's a very poor one, and it wastes money. So I don't understand how, as a business move, if it is, if you don't have the money, say so, but as a business move, it wastes money. So when you're doing our budget, I don't understand how you can make a good budget if your business moves are to make, well, are to lose money in the process, and put off your obligations of taxes for our, our city and our county. And then I would ask that council members stop blaming the news for every mistake that's made, to stand up and have the integrity to admit when you're wrong. Don't blame everybody around you. And it's hard for people in Sebastian to trust ones that always are blaming everybody else. And just because you make a mistake, say so, but don't blame our paper, especially Andy Hodges in our Sebastian Daily has been a wonderful, wonderful news for our, our city. And that's my opinion, and I'm allowed to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Right there.
We made you wait for a long time. Come on up.
My name is Jeff Croft, K-R-A-C-H-T. I reside at 5700 Marina Drive, Sebastian. I am not a resident of the City of Sebastian, and I appreciate the council's opportunity, opportunity allowing me to come up here and speak tonight. A little background on myself, I'm a retired homicide chief in Brooklyn South, detectives in New York City. I picked Sebastian 19 years ago to come here and reside based on one thing, and that was crime. I loved the low crime rate in Indian River, and that was one of my main decisions for coming here. The reason I left New York City, despite all the issues and problems there, it was deteriorating at such a rapid rate. As we've seen on TV recently, we can see the lack of respect for police officers in that city, which wouldn't have been tolerated in my day. But unfortunately, we live in a new era. I heard several council members tonight mention that we afford people due process. Well, I understand the officer came here to present his side of the case. He was never presented with due process. He was denied his due process. The chief was prepared, I believe, to make a statement at the same time in support of the officer. I find it, only one dissenting opinion on the board when it came to a vote to dismiss this individual. And I can understand volunteerism. I volunteer myself teaching young handicapped children how to ride horses. But the point is, I think when it's, there's a certain limit to how we can approve a volunteer to go on when he assaults a police officer and pleads no-lo contender, which means no contest, which is virtually a guilty play. And you didn't stand behind your officers, and I felt compelled here tonight to stand up for the officers of this city, because it's a great city, there's wonderful opportunities here, and I believe you're really remiss. And I'm not going to point fingers at those board members. I'm sure the public is aware of it, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Joe Cazari, 1401 Thornhill Lane, Sebastian. How you doing, Mayor? Nice to see you up on the bench. Just wanted to make a point. We keep talking about this gentleman that was put back on the board for striking a police officer. Has anybody realized that we have a police officer still on our force that killed a canine dog? We didn't get justice. The case was thrown out of court. That officer is Eric Antosha. I also looked into his jacket and found that he confiscated pills from somebody, and he never turned those pills in. Yet he's still on a police force. And here we are, angry about a man that probably hit a cop for a good reason, because the cop probably did something he shouldn't have done, which happens here in Sebastian quite often. And I've got three inches of paper to show you.
I'm just going to ask you if you would. Don't, don't, don't give conjecture like that. You don't know.
This is my right to freedom of speech. Don't push it, you'll be standing in a courtroom.
Okay.
I have my right, okay?
Everybody's got a right, but our, our meeting procedures, and our meeting procedures trump that.
Well, I just want to let everybody know, there's a cop on the force that killed a $60,000 canine and took pills that didn't belong to him, and everybody's concerned about a man that hit a police officer.
Okay, I'm not questioning that. All I'm saying is, you, you have no proof that the city, city police force is not competent. Mr. Hocker, please, sir.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. Being involved in multiple businesses at different times, there was one source of funding at a very low interest rate, and it was called my taxes owed on the business. I could defer my taxes two years, not paying, this is in New York, and not pay those taxes, but if I paid it at the end of the second year, my penalty was $100. was $100. I worked with that money during that time. You could not get approximately $30,000 to $40,000 for $100 use, two years, $200. It's business practice. It's common. We have, again, some local papers here, and I go up on the internet, and all I see is repetitiveness of statements pertaining to several of the council members. And it's repetitive. It's been running for three weeks, front page, this page, that page, of comments people made, or finances of people. I don't believe the papers. I happen to know the two people, but not very well. But, again, if we're looking at a paper that's saying, "You're not paying your taxes," I'll bet if the city looked at not paying their taxes, what we owe to the state or to the feds, and we looked at how much money that charges for being late, we might not want to pay city tax until a certain time to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward?
Graham Cox, 1213 George Street. I'm coming forward to just readdress item 13A if I can.
No, you can't, under public comment. You can't address an item that was on the agenda, under public comment.
I want to give him an offer of help.
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
Take his card. You can't, I, I, I have no issue with you talking about it, but under our rules, we can't, the public comment can only talk about things not on the agenda.
Okay.
If I change that, I'm gonna get myself in trouble. But, he will be more than happy if you take, if you get his card and talk to him. I don't, I don't...
I know where he lives.
Okay. You know where he lives? Get him. Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can you...
I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to see you volunteer to help.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a point of order? I, I don't have a problem with the gentleman giving him five minutes, going back to another agenda item. If the other members don't mind, I don't mind.
Well, the, the problem is that rules, the more you break the rule because you like the guy or something, I like Dr. Cox, and, and, but I, I think what he wanted to do is volunteer to help, and he's basically done that, so...
Yeah, and I, and I think that, you know, how long is it gonna take to speak, sir? One minute?
Yeah.
And here he is volunteering his service? Can you, can we, you know, make an exception? I've seen, I've been come to these meetings for 30 years, and I've seen council break plenty of rules. So, I, if, if they can get three votes up here to allow him a minute, I'm okay with that.
Ah, you know, this is almost exasperating.
It's just one minute.
Mr. Co, uh, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Come forward.
I still love you.
I'm beginning to wonder about that relationship.
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna have, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Under, under the resolution that we talked about earlier, Resolution 1511, you're, you're gonna have to take a vote in order to waive item C, public input.
Okay, then I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say no to your point of order. If you'd like to call a vote, have a good time.
Call a vote, please. Peel? Yes?
Okay, no, you can't call a vote. I run, Damian, Councilmember Gilliams, I run the meetings. We need to get that straight.
Okay.
Would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
No.
Vice Mayor Madi?
Yes.
Okay.
Before the city manager goes and selects his sites, or at the time he selects them, it would be good to have a botanist with him.
They've been selected.
Yeah.
Council, Councilmember Gilliams selected the sites in his motion.
Each, each of those sites needs a botanist to look at it.
Well, okay, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that the sites were selected by Councilmember Gilliams in his motion, so they've been selected.
Yeah.
And then, if you'd like to volunteer your services to help him look at those sites...
Volunteer services to find a botanist who will look at those sites before...
Well, talk to him about that, yeah. I mean, I, that's great, but the, the sites were actually selected by Councilmember Gilliams in his motion.
I understand that.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Thank, thank you for your service.
Anyone else want to come forward for a minute? Say something. Ma'am, if you would, please give your name and your address. You don't have to give your number, just give your street.
My name is Christine Vickers, 15-year resident city of Sebastian, George Street. Thank you for allowing me some time to speak tonight. I've been fortunate enough, on the years I've lived here, to serve on both the Budget Committee and as a Police Pension Board trustee. I've also served on corporate boards, run small businesses, and charitable boards. And I cannot begin to say how much the procedures and ignorance of the rules, and just ignoring the rules, is putting the city at risk. We've had discussion tonight on things to do and not to do, and what the processes are, from 5:00 to 5:45, and it didn't even last one night, okay? I just, I've never been up here before to talk like this. I'm not necessarily an outgoing person. I'm an introvert. I'm a number cruncher. But, this has got to stop. It's distressing the city of Sebastian. It's pulling it apart. This is a great city. We truly need to work. There needs to be no cronyism, no bypassing procurement procedures, because we know a guy in a car lot that might give it cheaper. It's got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward?
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to item 15A. City staff.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the lighting for the pickleball courts. We went out to bid once and received no bids. We redid the bids and gave some additional time for the contractors to complete the project due to the workload that they had, and we received four bids. Ampro came in at the lowest and most responsive bid of $104,070. We'd asked council to consider approving that proposal.
Any comments?
No motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, public input.
Thank you.
Keep me straight, Linda.
I just have a question. A token machine for, to operate the lighting, how does the token machine work? Do they pay to get the tokens?
They buy the tokens at the golf course, and then they can insert the tokens to turn the lights on.
And how much are the tokens, and how long do they last?
Okay, so our original thought was $5, and it would give you a little over an hour and 15 minutes, which is how long it takes to play a game. And that would light up two courts, because you can only light up two courts at a time. Alright.
And that works better, that would work better than the system we have at the Schuman Drive tennis courts, where they just have a switch they can turn on to get the lights working? Or are you trying to get money to pay the electric bill?
We're trying to get money to pay the rent to the airport for having the pickleball courts on the airport property.
That's a good reason. Thank you.
So, that's what, that's what the revenue stream is designed to do. Okay. Alright, we have a motion. No more public comment. Vote, please.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Madi?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, we have item number 15B. Mr. City Manager.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is, was a design-build contract that was awarded previously. UGALI came out and did an assessment and a design for a generator. To give you a brief in, understanding of what happened, the previous, the generator that currently runs the police station is divided, and it runs the IT Department of the city and part of the police station. In an emergency, that doesn't leave the police station completely functional. In an emergency situation, it needs to be completely functional. So, the original plan was to buy a generator prior to my coming to just run the IT process. I felt it was better that we go out for this design build and have it run the entire City Hall in the case of an emergency. And so, that's what we did. UGALI came out with the design, with the amount of generator that needs to run the building, and separate the police department and City Hall to be standalone and fully functional in the event of an emergency. There is one error in the addition that didn't show up. The trade wins direct purchase to save the tax dollars, we elected not to do the stainless steel cabinet at $7,125. That's why there's a discrepancy in the total invoices and the amount requested for the project.
Yeah, and you, you passed out this worksheet.
Yes, Mr. Baker, put that together for you.
Any comments from anybody up here?
Paul, the energy that goes from City Hall isn't separated from IT. It's all one whole diversion of energy from the generator, correct?
Mr. Mayor, it will be. Currently, it, it, it's all together except in an emergency. So, in an emergency, there's a transfer switch that switches IT and the police station to a, to a generator that's currently there. We want it, and we want IT in this city to be one standalone unit, and the sheriff's, the police department to be one unit. And if they have to move over here, they can. If we, you know, we can operate whole 100%, which we should be able to as a government entity.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Anybody? Do you have a motion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Councilmember Gilliams, second by Councilmember Paris. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Madi?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, city attorney matters. Nothing, sir. City manager?
I'm, I have nothing to add.
City clerk? Okay, Councilmember Ferris?
I just want to thank Paul for all of his efforts with our herbicide substitution is the best words I can come up with. And I hope you can manage to segment this testing to the best of your ability. I'm sure you will. I do have concerns about the budget, because when I saw how expensive this looks, like when you gave your presentation, and I think maybe we should consider some other vendors, because I know there's other products. For example, the gentleman last night, and I don't know, Lisa was given the sample, if it, if you'd received it, and I know you need time to do that, but, and I'm also very concerned that I, myself, look for alternatives for pest management control, whatever you want to call it. I had one company who backed up and said the city's just too big. So, I'm hoping you're really researching that and looking for alternatives, because it's a concern to me.
We are. And I did receive the samples, and he still needs to provide me some documentation.
No, I'll wait till my matters. Okay. You have anything else? Vice Mayor Madi?
I have no comments tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes, thank you. Paul, I want to apologize if I, I was a little excited at that last with the attorney thing. I saw if I offended anybody over there. I apologize. So, same with the attorney.
Thank you.
Just want to let everybody know that Indian River County has stopped their meeting yesterday, glyphosate. It's not, the roundup's not being sprayed anymore in the county. So, I think that's great news. I want to make sure everybody knows about that. I, I have a few things that I'd like to get the board's consensus, Mr. Mayor, that we can put on a future agenda for discussion. We talk about the CRA being a very important asset to the community, and I had the opportunity to get a, a small tour down there with the city manager to look at some of the things that he showed me, but I had some other items that concerned me. First thing is the Harbor Lights property that we purchased, so that we can save the view of the river on the east side. That's over by the Chamber of Commerce. You know what I'm talking about, Harbor Lights? And it's boarded up, and it's, it's, it's an eyesore. So, if we can get that on a future agenda for discussion as to, A, put some sort of plan into place, either fix it up, clean it up, rent it out to artists, and put some parking there. If there's anything that a community does not need, it's a boarded-up building. And so, can I get a consensus?
I, I don't think you'd need it. I think you can ask him to put that on, we have to have a CRA meeting to deal with that, but I think you can ask him to put that on the agenda.
Well, can I get a consensus?
It's fine with me if you want it on the agenda.
Okay, so, Mr. Paul, would you do that? Okay. So, we can move in at some sort of direction on that property, because it's, it's just, it's a negativity down there. Also, the, there's some other properties down there. I'm not gonna mention any names that are eyesores that probably are in violation. They call them observation decks, and I don't want to pick on anybody, but if we're talking about investing millions and millions of dollars into our working waterfront, then we have to start with letting the property owners down there that would over, you know, if you have a, a, a site plan that's in process, that was in process, it expired, if you call it an observation desk, that, then you have to provide parking, you have to provide a way for people to get up there. And I don't want to just pick on one particular property, but we have a lot of that. We had stuff like that going down there on Indian River Drive with the county, with the Archie Smith property that's boarded up. And it's the wrong message that we're sending. So, if, if we can get this also, Mr. Mayor, on a, the CRA, because it is in the CRA?
I think that would be a code enforcement issue.
Well...
And basically, the code enforcement staff, if, if you, if you think of our specific properties, did you feel like that? I think you're, well, then you're right to ask the city manager to have code enforcement look at it, and let the code enforcement staff decide if there's some reason that they can come out.
I'm not interested in turning the code enforcement loose on, on particular property owners. All I'm asking them to do is to maybe send somebody down there to, A, clean it up, if it's a site plan that's being modified or being changed. I, I want to work with the businesses of this community. I don't want to go tag them and say, "Hey, it's $100,000 a day. Go cut your grass." You know, there's a lot of things that have been going on in the past that I'm going to confront in the year 2020. And I think it's been, there's been properties after hurricanes that owners got notice for not completing the construction on their property. They told them either build it or tear it down. And I'm not seeing a level playing field for everybody down there.
Okay, that's, once again, I, I see that as a code enforcement issue. I, I can't see why the council wouldn't want to talk about an individual piece of property like that. I'm sorry?
And I remember...
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Could I address that?
Sure, sure.
I know it's out of order, and I'm asking.
That's fine.
Sure.
So, we have sent out cards to all the property owners in the CRA district to let them know that we're gonna be looking at all the site plans and all of that, give them time to look at what they're doing. So, it's not a, "We're coming. We're just gonna come and start violating you." We've sent a, a notice out to the CRA to get them to understand that we're gonna be inspecting it for compliance. If we find non-compliance, we're gonna give them time to correct it. We're not going in there as a hammer. We're going in there to try to clean it up. And notices were sent out.
My only concern is, I, I would prefer that we not, in an open meeting, discuss a piece of property.
No, no, that's not my take.
And I think the city staff, through the code enforcement method, can do that without us individually discussing a piece of property, is all. I, I don't disagree. I, I agree there's some places down there.
And, and, and actually, there are properties that are permitted to operate without proper site plans to begin with. They don't have parking. They don't have drainage. How they got open and operating, because it's beyond me, but I, I'm not going to be selective tonight. I'm not gonna go after them. But, we, we need to be fair to everybody across the board. And I can point them out if I have to, but I don't want to do that.
Just be careful. You got a business down there.
I've got, yeah, I got two businesses down there.
And I'm sure somebody might be after you.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is the Legislative Affairs for interns for our community, and I'd like to get a consensus from this board. I'm interested, I spoke to the college, and I spoke to the high school, the IB program, and I'm interested in getting the kids to come to City Hall, make application for college credits, and learn about Government 101, where we can, Mr. Mayor, have them come up here, get two, one or two IB students or college students assigned to us, where they would act as legislative interns, and they can understand how our government operates. And maybe when they go on to college, they may want to consider a degree in administration, government administration. I think it would be a great source for the college and the high school, for those kids to, to get credits too, because if you apply for Bright Future scholarships, you need to have community service. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that. You love that idea?
I, I have no problem with that. I would, but what I would say is that we need to ask the city manager to get our HR director to set out the legalities and work up a program and so forth.
I have some stuff, as long as I have a consensus from this board, I'll get with Paul.
I think we could direct the city manager right now to work with the HR staff. I have no problem with that, in trying to establish a program by which we can bring in students to do that. I have no issue with that. Do you have a problem?
I have no problem with that, but the schools would have to be involved in that.
Well, it has to go through the right legalities. Our HR department has to meet, first we have to go to the school board. They have to, I mean, there's lots of things they have to do in order to do that, so...
Yeah, yeah, but I think it would be interesting, at first it'll help us as representatives of the community to have interns that can assist us as well, and they can sit up here behind us and learn Government 101 on how we debate and how we, we set legislation here. So, okay, the, the other thing that I had was the Citizens Academy. And I know we have one at the police department. We have a police academy, and the chief and her staff does a great job in running that. I took the class down there, I think it was a 12-week class, and it saves this community a lot of money, probably over a quarter million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, with the number of volunteers we have. I'd like to see that emphasized more on this side of the block and this City Hall, where we have some sort of program set up where citizens get some sort of ID card showing that they are, gone through a class, went through the department. that they are, gone through a class, went through the departments here, got educated on how the departments work, and then they can also volunteer where we can get 20 to 25 volunteers. And maybe, you know, where they have a, a city ID that says, hey, I'm a volunteer, and maybe there's businesses in the community that say, you know what? You helped keep my taxes down. If you show your volunteer card, I'd like to afford you 10% or 5% on your bill. It's just getting the public more involved in our City Hall and given, and if you have more volunteers, it can help the department heads and with the oversight of the City Manager, obviously. But I'd like to see more interns on this side, on that side. I think it would be good for the community. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Okay. Once again, I think the same thing with the Citizens Academy before, I mean, I personally, before I want to approve that, would like to see a write-up on definition on, you know, what the costs are, what things we can do.
Pervod County runs one. I'll be more than happy to get that information for the City Manager.
Well, I, let our City Manager and the HR department work on putting that stuff together. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay. Great.
And if, if, if the proposal is submitted to us and it shows that we have, we have a benefit from that and it's not going to cost us a ton of money, I don't know. We'll have to talk, I mean, we have to go through that process, but I'd like to see a proposal written on that.
Okay.
You have a problem with that? No? Okay.
Okay. And the, the other thing that I think would help this community a great deal, and I got to commend Paul and his staff about getting organized with their grant writers. I'd like to see more grant writers, especially with the money that's being made available through the Indian River Lagoon Council as well as the governor's office, through DEP. And if we have, we have ready-set plans where we need help with like the canal walls that need to be reconstructed. I know that's a $15 million project that's been put off. We did one part of the Highlands, and I think that's a water issue. I would like to see how we can organize more grant writers, and if staff can figure out a way, not only just grant writers, I'm going to throw this out too, a possible lobbyist to help us get those fundings because those are large projects, and having a lobbyist up in Tallahassee, talking to the right legislators, getting things put in the right direction can, can assist us in fixing some of these canal walls that the public has been asking me about for a long time, and it's not fair that we just do one side, Mr. Mayor, which, you know what I'm talking about, over by Lakeport.
I know what you're talking about.
Okay. But the other side...
It's not $15 million, it's $25 million.
I agree, though. There's federal money that's expiring due to the freeze earlier this year in the federal. There's a lot of money out there. We don't have enough grant writers.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make that one of our goals too this year. I'm a goal-oriented person. I'd like to see at the end of the year that we've got a plan in place to get these things done.
Let's, it's not a bad idea, but what I'd like to do if I can is wait till the strategic plan is finished and kind of build on that.
When is that, when is that going to be ready?
Actually, we've had, I've had conversations with the City Manager about trying to present it to the Budget Review Committee early in the process so they understand the, the beginning of the strategic plan budget tied together. So, I, we're talking about this, you know, this, this fall probably kind of thing.
Midsummer, I would think. We've been through a few meetings on, and I've got one next week. What I would suggest, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and Council, we'll be bringing to you a goal, a budget, objectives for the budget here in the next meeting or two so that you can set goals for what you want to see in the budget so we can adapt those to the budget. I think that would be an appropriate time to bring those items up, not necessarily during the strategic plan. And I will say, grant writing is great, but grant administration is what we need.
Okay. So... Okay, great. Just a reminder too, the Chamber of Commerce, I drove by their parking lot over there behind their building, and I see it says chamber parking only on city property, that sign that we talked about.
That was changed.
We changed that sign.
Yeah, but I looked at it today, or the other day, yesterday, and it says chamber parking. In reality, it's not chamber parking. It's public parking, and that sign needs to be changed.
We did change that already once.
Nope. It says, it says chamber parking only.
Okay.
And that's not accepted.
The current council at the time, that's what they approved.
Yeah. We didn't approve chamber parking only on that.
It doesn't say only.
It doesn't say only?
It says chamber parking. It's very misleading, and what I'm asking, if I can get a consensus of this council to direct staff to fix that so that it's public parking. It used to be a public park. Sure, the chamber can park there, but anybody should park there. I don't think that we should be misleading people thinking, well, it says chamber on there. I'm not going in there.
We, we need to verify the lease and see what kind of parking arrangements are in the lease.
Mr. Mayor, I checked it already. It's not part of the lease, and I'm sure...
The lease says...
I'd rather hear that from you.
Well, I already spoke to him about it.
Yeah.
So, the lease, the lease says there has, that we have to provide them, I believe it is, nine parking spaces within 250 feet of the building. That parking lot is not part of their, excuse me, that parking lot is not part of their lease.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we can change the sign?
Yes.
Okay. Now, so you're saying it was a council action to post that sign?
Council action did not. Council directed me to take the words "only" off the sign, and we did so.
Okay. So, under council direction, you can modify the sign to say public parking?
Yeah.
Council consensus, I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a consensus of council to do that?
Public parking. Yep.
Is that...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, you have, you have your direction on that?
Thank you.
Okay. The, the other thing is, before I close out on what I'm, I'm saying, I, I heard some issues about the police officer and the hearing that he never got. I did call the officer after what transpired that evening, and he did get back to me. I didn't get a hold of him right away, and he got back to me, and he said, Damien, I was okay with the way you handled it. And let me tell you what my thinking was when I did handle it that way. I felt that the judicial system took care of it at their level. There was a deal cut. There was allegations made. They were never proved. There was a withhold of adjudication. There was no guilty verdict. I felt, I did not want to put an officer through it. I didn't want to put a volunteer through it. I wanted to, I wanted to send the message to this community that, hey, you can volunteer here, and you get your due process, and if you got it at the courthouse, I didn't feel that they should get it again here. But there are some people that disagree with the way I handled it. There was four votes up here, and I apologized to that officer, and I meant no harm. I respect our law enforcement. If there's anybody in this community that respects this, our law enforcement, it's me, and so I don't want anybody to mislead. The other issue that somebody brought up, and I'm not going to really comment on it a whole lot, but my taxes get paid every year. Now, if she's not informed on how the system works, I'm sorry. If she calls me and asks me personally, I'd be happy to step her through it. But if anybody ever looked at the kind of taxes that I've paid into this community over 40 years, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, shame on anybody that says I don't pay my taxes. There's a system that's afforded individuals that if you don't want to pay them, you can out to another process where somebody else pays them for you, but they're paid, and you're misinformed. And there are newspapers out there that like to sell articles and write a half a story, but they don't talk about the other side as to how it's available to everybody. Developers do it. I've done it, but my taxes get paid, and I own a lot of property in this community, and shame on somebody for accusing me of not paying my taxes because I pay them, and I never lost a piece of property over it. So, that's my business. That's nobody else's business. But call me. By the way, I got a new cell phone, and I want to share it with the community, so you can call me.
Is this your city cellphone?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah. I want everybody to know.
I'm glad you're not sharing your privacy.
Because I've been calling councilmembers' phones for many years, and it's always jammed up, and they never unload their messages. Please, I'd love to hear from you. Call me. I would like to try to help you if you have an issue. I will return your call, and I also have an email where I prefer you to use if you need to contact me. D. Gilliams, G.I.L.L.I.A.M.S@cityofsebastian.org, and I will get back to you. If you don't want your information to be public record, be careful what you put there because it's public record. I'm going to be turning my phone in every month so they can update it. All my information's open to the public, my emails and all my phone messages. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't mean to take up so much time.
Okay. Mr. Carlyle, would you talk about the two workshops that are coming up? We have not talked about those in the public, the dates and the times for those.
So, the two workshops regarding the, the spraying and the, and the pesticide uses is going to be on the 15th at 5:00, and a second meeting on the 23rd at 1:30.
Okay. And just for anybody out there who may be listening, although it's late, and then I see our audience is abandonist for the most part, but those workshops are not intended for us to complain about glyphosate or to talk about any of that kind of stuff. That's all been done. I think I heard Charles at the Natural Resources Board last night say, that's yesterday. Good analogy. It's, it's, that's yesterday. That's already been done. What we're talking about is that back page that Councilwoman Ferris referred to a little while ago with all those dollars on it and all those possible solutions. And what we're trying to do is to come up with some definition of the solution so we can come up with some definition of the cost, and that's what the objective of those is. And you have an outsider, you have an impartial moderator that's coming in to do that.
Correct.
He is from the, from the Indian River Lagoon Council, very knowledgeable individual, so it's not like we're trying to bully that through. It's coming through that, that process. The way I see that happening is these two workshops and then a tentative plan put together, and then we will have another, probably another two workshops, because then we're going[1511.63]